This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
Call to order tonight's school board meeting, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the opens meetings law notification this evening?
Yes, we have.
Thank you, please do a roll call.
Commissioner Duax. Sorry, here, Commissioner Hombach Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill.
Here.
Commissioner Spindler.
Here.
Commissioner Boo.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Great, thank you. So, next is on our agenda is the public forum. Public forum usually asks up to thirty minutes and we have four tonight on the forum. First, we have Tim Allison. Please go up, state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Tim Allison, I'm at eighteen twenty-one Hopkins Avenue and I am an English teacher at Memorial High School and my colleagues from Memorial High School and I would like to tell you about some of our successes and some of the challenges that we experienced at Memorial. I've been an educator for over twenty years in Illinois and Wisconsin. I moved to the area recently with my partner and I'm pursuing an advanced degree at the university, but I've had a perspective of seeing many different school districts and how things operate and different practices. And one of the things that I've really noticed is that the staff at Memorial, which I've had most of my experience, I did teach last year in DeLong, most of my experience has been at Memorial and I've seen how dedicated and hardworking the staff is. They go above and beyond expectations, they work well beyond contract hours, particularly in the English department where I spend most of my time. They are grading until, you know, what, it's amazing the amount of work that they can do and how late they will go and how early I see people there. It's amazing the kind of technology and that they integrate, the projects they integrate with technology, they involve blogging, multimedia productions, these, we use Google Suite and incorporate collaboration with the students and including presentations and revising and editing, particularly with the Chromebooks, which has been a very, very nice addition in the last year. There's a newspaper that's published online as well as videos that are created for information, informative purposes, as well as news segments. And we work with a huge variety of students and as you know, there's been a push to get more people involved and enriched in AP classes and helping those students that may have fewer skills coming in and working with them, getting them up to speed so that they can be successful with the challenges that are endemic in a higher leveling class. We work particularly with the time that we've given recently this year to align our curriculum vertically so we can work from grade level to grade level and know what each class or each grade level is doing and even within grade level what the enriched versus the non-enriched students are doing and understanding how the curriculum will flow. And in particular, we have been getting into with that time, we've been getting into planning across the curriculum. For instance, there is one program that's being, that's integrating the visual arts, music, theater, and language arts into a showcase where we're asking the public to come in and that will be a forum that's going to integrate all of those areas. Now, that's wonderful, but I was also limited, that's all being done during, piecing that together when a few minutes show up or there, it's fifteen minutes in between other meetings during the, during the professional development time. So, we do have some challenge, that being one of them with the time that we have and the planning time, we would, there could be more projects that we could do, there'd be more advances that we would be able to do. We would, I know there are people on staff that would love to develop a literacy center that is offered during the school day so the students in their, when they're in their study halls would be able to come out of study hall and have peer tutoring and get peer feedback, but that would take coordination, would also take staffing. So, we're doing well, but we could do better and we could have more opportunities for our students. We could coordinate with University of Wisconsin Eau Claire and the English Education Program or other education programs and have tutoring assistants or teaching assistants in the class, giving those university students the training that they need and also helping the classroom instructor with our caseload. Class sizes are now thirty and above and that's not typical from my experience where I have been teaching in the past decade or two. And that typical class size that I've seen is twenty-four, twenty-five and when you add those differences up, it's as if each teacher is teaching one overload every day. And that's just, that's really not sustainable to be teaching in overload throughout the entire career and it's been pretty consistent from what I understand. Also, consider how long it would take you to grade one essay. How long do you think it would take you to grade two pages of written text and doing responses? Five minutes? Ten? Twenty? If you can do that in twenty minutes and you have a hundred and fifty students, if it takes thirty minutes and you have a hundred and fifty students for one assignment, that's seventy-five hours that it takes to correct that outside of the school day. And that's just one assignment and that's a, that's a large essay, but that is a considerable investment of time. And that's even, that's just, that's one essay if it was a five-minute spot check daily. So, with the class sizes, there are challenges as well. I know that there are some limitations on equipment, for instance, I know that you have a very nice document viewer and I would like to use a document viewer in my classroom, but the quality of the image is really pretty, pretty grainy and it's very hard to make out, so that influences how I can do an instruction as well. I know that the person that does the online newspaper has a very limited number of computers that they're able to use. If there were more resources, more students could have hands-on experiences, they would be able to do more work and they'd be able to do it better. I know that some teachers in the past have been able to take their students to Guthrie, which is an outstanding facility, really nationally known, take their students to be, to take Shakespeare plays, but that's become too costly and they're no longer doing that. And with the additional people in AP and expanded and dual credit, we need a systemic, a systemic program to help support those kids, particularly when they're coming in with fewer skills, not just the extra effort that a teacher is doing outside of the school day, but something that's ingrained in the system that allows the students to get the extra help that they need. So, we're very successful, but we also have many challenges and with that, I'd like to pass it off to Archie who will talk about his experiences in mathematics.
Good evening, I'm Archie Ecker, I'm at fourteen oh five Willow Lane in Eau Claire. I'm a mathematics instructor at Memorial High School. My wife and I have four children, a daughter who graduated from North High School last year and three children who remain authentically engaged learners at North, DeLong, and Sherman Schools. It will be eight years before our youngest son graduates from high school, presumably North High School, we'll see. At Memorial High School, we are a very busy, hard-working and often stressed student body and staff. Our math curriculum is guided by a program called College Preparatory Mathematics. The fourth course in the sequence called Precalculus is rolling out this year. So each of the past four years, we have implemented a new set of course materials as the levels progressed, grades nine through twelve. This year's graduating class of twenty sixteen is the last class that has only a requirement of two math credits to graduate. Beginning with the class of twenty seventeen, three math credits are required and I believe that the overall number of credits required is increased as well. Furthermore, these three math courses students are required to take ask all students to study and do more math. All students are minimally required to take college prep math, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Standards-based practices embedded in each course include making sense of problems, persevering, reasoning abstractly, constructing viable arguments, and critiquing the reasoning of others, to list some. Instructors apply study team teaching strategies that get students thinking, talking, and connecting to solve problems. All students are required to dig deeper conceptually and do more work without an easier or less rigorous pathway, which is good. Here's an example, with a couple of safe assumptions. Last Friday, all students, all day long in my classes, were required to model the trajectory of a sixty-one yard hail mary touchdown pass using a quadratic function. That was one of the most beautiful parabolas I ever saw and it, it's, it has replaced my image of watching water spill from a melting glacier in the Swiss Alps, mostly. Results of a challenging curriculum coupled with more required courses include increased teaching, reteaching, retake testing, more opportunities for students to learn that are, you know, instructor involved. More students require assistance. Under these conditions, there is a bottleneck in the number of students that an instructor can realistically support. Students can get help in after-school study sessions from volunteers and instructors, but not all can take advantage of that with transportation barriers, after-school jobs, sports. Into the future, expect that the needs for effective, sustainable student and instructor support as part of the school day and, you know, the common workload will increase. As registration for classes next year begins, students are encouraged to take risks. We're asking them to challenge themselves by considering AP courses or other transcribed advanced standing experiences while in high school. If they agree to take on the challenge as we desire to go beyond the status quo in AP enrollment, more students will require additional academic help like AP resource to be successful, as Mr. Allison mentioned. We also have instructors eager to see, eager to see students learn using more technology in math classrooms. Some, some are actually chomping at the bit to use it routinely. I don't like to think or even say that we're behind in the use of technology because I don't like to be behind in anything, but instead, we're ready to take some steps forward in that area. And I know that accessible technology in the classrooms comes at a price with necessary training, support, and maintenance. As a parent, fees and fundraisers, I won't even get into that here, but I desire that my children and all children have the same opportunities that kids had ten and twenty years ago and I want to live in a community that supports them. And I thank you very much for listening to me this evening and I now must exit quickly and head up to North High School to catch a band concert that's already in progress. My son David plays a trumpet there, so again, thanks.
Thank you, Archie.
Good evening, my name's Cory Fritz at thirty-six forty-five South Anita Drive and like Archie, I also have two, I have two children who attend the Eau Claire School District and I've been teaching at Memorial since nineteen ninety-five when Mr. Leibham was kind enough to hire me. I, I teach in a chemistry classroom, which is a lab-based course. Currently, I've start, most of my classes in August with thirty-plus students. However, our design in our building houses twenty-four to twenty-six lab stations. If, you know, that right there has been a cause of concern and I guess the focus I have today is that I worry about the opportunities that all students have because research shows that when you do group work, a pair of students working together is much better than three and exponentially better than four because once we start doing hands-on activities with more than two children, no, they aren't getting enough of the hands-on themselves. But I'm forced at times to put three to four students in a lab space that requires two children and we're very creative. I work with wonderful people with great ideas. We often have gone to doing lab simulations in the computer. We've often gone to demonstrating something in the front of the room and giving out data for the numeric processing to students. While we're still able to do the things that the curriculum demands and we've been very creative in that, it does, it doesn't give the kid the hands-on. Many of you remember chemistry where something ultimately started on fire or maybe your classroom. Maybe, you know, there's a little excitement in the day. When we see that on the computer screen, it's not quite as exciting, but with our limited resources, we're trying to be good stewards of the budget we're given. We try to make the most for every kid, we, but that often means that the child who maybe is a little standoffish, maybe isn't as outgoing, is maybe in the back corner watching two other people really do the work and as much as we try to get out there, it doesn't always happen. I worry about every kid having opportunity, including my own. I have a child who's very shy, who isn't, who's probably the one in the back corner. I also have a child who probably directs traffic in the room. We all know that kids vary differently. The classroom isn't the only place that I worry about opportunity. I've coached track and volleyball in the school district, I've also coached the academic decathlon team for many years at Memorial and during those times, a lot of kids have found a home in those activities. But again, as we stretch our budget more and limit opportunity, whether it's in the arts, the academics, or athletics, the fees are starting to pile on to kids and that really harms the opportunity for those kids who maybe don't have the resources that my children might have. And so, I find that I'm worried about helping kids on an individual basis. We are very, have a lot of ingenuity in our building. We find great ways for kids to work in groups and peer coach and work together to balance those thirty-some students, but when it comes down to it, some kids do need your individual attention and a lot of kids do need a home at Memorial or any school where somebody's concerned about them. And when you have thirty kids in a class, that may not happen. Our expectation has almost become, if you need individual help, you should come to the library after school. And I worked there three nights a week and it's wonderful to see forty or fifty kids there on a regular basis coming to get individualized help. However, those are the kids that have a ride home, don't need to ride the bus, or don't have a job or this or that. It would really be good for all students if those opportunities could happen throughout the day instead of on their own time. And so, I'd like to just leave you with the idea that we can make a lot of considerations for our kids and we can really make kids that are high achievers and we can give them all they need, but I worry about the kid that isn't the high achiever or isn't outgoing that may not get all the opportunities because we simply don't have the time in a day, the budget, and the systematic approach to helping those kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Goings, E. One seven four five zero County Road V in Augusta. I spent my first twenty years with the Eau Claire Area School District as a high school English teacher at Memorial before being hired this past summer as the instructional coach for the building. My new position coincided with the district's redesign of the calendar to include more professional development and instructional planning opportunities. I've been unfortunate to be a part of the planning and implementation of the PD IP days at Memorial and I wanted to share with you a little bit how our staff and students have benefited from that additional time dedicated to school improvement. One of the best parts of my new job is getting to work with various departments throughout the building and seeing all the amazing things that teachers do on a daily basis to engage students in the learning process. As we started to plan our first professional development day, we wanted to capitalize on these in-house resources instead of bringing in outside experts. We borrowed from Scott Carr's philosophy that professional development is not a spectator sport. Carr states, "As leaders, we're obligated to provide our students with the full impact of the staff's collective knowledge and talents." Memorial's PD efforts this fall have focused on the building's literacy goal. Teacher-led breakout sessions modeled instructional strategies and colleagues were invited to share their best practices. Our instructional planning sessions have given us extended work time to finalize common summative and formative assessments, identify learning targets, and for the first time in my tenure with the district, to host vertical team meetings. Staff feedback to the IP PD days has been overwhelmingly positive. Survey comments include, "Appreciate the time to share with colleagues," "Vertical alignment was awesome," and "Best PD day in ten years." Not only are teachers benefiting from the increased collaboration, but students are as well. These interdisciplinary literacy workshops have led to students engaging in cross-curricular strategies. For example, students are given a template for Cornell notes in science, may find that same model replicated in their social studies class as well. Students may be taught the same vocabulary strategies in a world languages class that they can use in technology education. And the Melcon paragraph that students use to write about the article of the week in English is the same organizational structure that they employ when reacting to a passage in world studies. We're off to a great start with professional development, but there's still a lot of work to be done. So far, our efforts have been focused on universal instruction and common assessments, but as you've heard from my colleagues, there's an ever-increasing need for individualized interventions and supports. Educators are going above and beyond to meet the needs of individual learners, but they often do so in isolation and they don't always reach every student in need. It is my hope that going forward, we can continue to foster collaboration and communication among educators to come up with targeted and systemic interventions that meet the needs of all learners. John Hattie, in his book Visible Learning for Teachers: Maximizing Impact for Learning, lists the factors that have the greatest impact on student success based on extensive meta-analysis of educational research. Hattie states, "Teachers' beliefs and commitments are the greatest influence on student achievement over which we have some control. Please continue to support students by supporting educators in their quest to practice both what is best for all and what is necessary for each." Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. All right, that finishes the public forum for this evening, I appreciate it very much. Next, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events for you. December tenth, there will be a meeting of the Demographic Trends Committee and that will take place at four PM in the Administration Building. On December fourteenth, the Budget Development Committee will meet at eleven-thirty AM at the Administration Building. And also on that day at seven PM, there will be a meeting of the Advisory Council, Parent Advisory Council. On December fifteenth, at six PM at the Administration Building, there will be a special closed session of the Board. On December sixteenth, there will be a Compensation Study Committee meetings. From four to six PM, the hourly group will meet and from six to eight PM, the certified group will meet. And then on December seventeenth, from eight until ten AM, the non-affiliated group will meet for the Compensation Study Committee meeting. On December twenty-fourth, or I'm sorry, December twenty-first, at ten-thirty AM in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee. And that will be also the evening of our school board meeting that will start at seven PM. And just as a reminder, although I don't think I have to remind anybody, all schools will be closed from December twenty-third to January first for the winter break. And I have a few more words to say afterwards.
Okay, great, thank you. So next on our agenda is my report, mine's very short, just a reminder to those who are interested that there are four board seats up for the April election, three are three-year terms and one is a one-year term. So if you're interested, visit our business office to get out papers. The other announcement I had is I got a call from Helen Drawbert of Altoona, the president of Altoona School Board, and she had been contacted by the UW Madison Chancellor's Office about perhaps meeting with the chancellor in our area sometime in May to discuss K-12 issues along with the UW. So I wanted to let board members know that that might be a possibility and she's gonna just, has to come up with a proposal to them about what we might talk about with them. So she would like to get together the boards with that chancellor to discuss K-12 issues. One thing that they request is to find out which board members are UW grads from any, any institution in, in, in the state.
Any UW system.
Any UW system grad, so you can let me know later if you were a graduate in one way or another from those. And I'll keep you up to date, I'll keep you up to date of what happens, okay, with this. So, she want me to let you know, calling me today about that possibility.
President Spindler.
Okay, UW Eau Claire.
President Spindler.
Yes.
Will we be having a meeting with the Altoona Board or other boards to discuss the topics?
No, because she, she has to make this proposal or suggestion to the chancellor's office within two weeks, so she's gonna put it together and go for it. She'll, she'll consult with, she'll ask me some, you know, if you have any ideas, feel free to send me ideas that I could forward to her, that would be fine. Yeah, sure, so. Student representative's report, who would like to go first? Over here, they look at each other, okay, go ahead, Jason.
So just before Thanksgiving, Memorial had Transgender Awareness Week initiated by the Gender Sexuality Club, Gender Sexuality Awareness Club at Memorial. And a few weeks ago, SUN Council decorated the cafeteria, so our cafeteria is Christmas-themed now with a few Christmas trees in the cafeteria, which is pretty nice. We're in the process of scheduling winter carnival and we're thinking of a theme, we're thinking about asking the SUN body to choose between two options for the theme. And on Thursday and Friday, Justin Kelly, who are New York Improvers, they will be coming to the theater class to present to the theater students about improvisational acting. There is a fundraiser going on currently by the Raising the Funds Club and it's mainly to help the Bolton Refuge House. Basically, during this week or next, if you go to Buffalo Wild Wings and present them with this ticket, they will donate a certain amount to the Bolton Refuge House. And tonight, there is an orchestra, band orchestra concert at Memorial. And improvisational acting, we have two shows going on this week, Friday and Saturday, at seven to eleven PM at The Plus. And Memorial Improv will be performing along with several other improv teams from around the nation. It's ten dollars for one show for one night, fifteen dollars for both nights and I believe that we have a board member who will be performing that night, Mr. Jean.
Yes, we do.
And they, they have other workshops as well for the improvisational acting, if you guys would like to go. And that's pretty much my report.
Great, thank you, Jason. Emily, go ahead.
So, tonight, North also has a band concert, as you found out from the public forum, I guess. And next week, we, next week, Monday, we have a choir concert with all of the caroling getting festive. This week, we're doing a student council blanket drive to make blankets for the community. It's a big thing that we, we've done for the past couple of years, so I'm excited to see how that turns out. We have planned winter carnival, the date, and the theme is set for Central Park and we got our committees together, so.
All right, great, good, thank you. Let's see, board committee reports, I know we have budget, Commissioner Jean, you want to give that?
The Budget Committee met on, what day was that again? The thirtieth. We met on the thirtieth, which was last Monday and we went over, what, the committee went over what we would like to see in a potential referendum and administration also gave us some numbers as far as cost, estimates of costs per each program that we would like to, to see on the referendum. We gave them some more feedback so they could make some final adjustments to give us that question that we would like to see.
Great, thank you. Policy and governance, Commissioner Luganbill?
So we met this morning at ten-thirty and we approved bringing policy three thirty-two. So we met this morning at 10:30, and we approved bringing Policy 332 on Innovation Zones to tonight's meeting for discussion and possible first reading. And in addition, we agreed to bring Policy 424 on open enrollment and Policy 154 on board self-evaluation to our December 21st meeting. And we will be having a committee meeting December 21st at 10:30, and we'll be discussing a number of policies, including 225, Evaluation of the Superintendent, 133, Board Vacancies, 230, Administrative Team. And in January, we are looking to cover new policies for seclusion and restraint, fraud, services and programs for EL students. And there are a number of other new and existing policies that will be around the corner, and we're still researching topics on transgender students and considerations in schools and the upcoming potential policy changes that will be discussed along those lines.
Great, thank you. Not sure, we haven't had a charter committee meeting recently. Foundation, anything from that? Okay, so I think Endemotrends has not been recent, I don't believe. This coming up, right? Okay, I think that covers it. So it looks like we're ready for the legislative report. Go ahead.
I am not going to do a legislative report tonight because we worked on putting together a discussion tonight for a possible resolution, so I thought we would spend our time on that. The only thing I can add as far as the resolution relative to the Assembly Bill 41, Senate Bill 355, to place restrictions on school district referenda ballot dates. I did read an article where if that does pass through both houses, the governor is in favor of it, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. So next is Consent Resolution Agenda. Under this, these are either routine items or items we've considered already. We will vote on them all at once unless a board member asks to poll any of them. So I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of November 16th, 2015. I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session, November 16th, 2015. I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of the special closed session on November 19th, 2015. I would entertain a motion to approve a motion, to approve the minutes of special closed session, November 24th of 2015. And I would entertain a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report. I would entertain a motion to approve the revisions to Policy 460, Student Scholarships and Awards. And I would entertain a motion to approve the revisions to Policy 840, Gifts to Eau Claire's Area School District. So move. Second. Motion from Commissioner Jean, a second from Commissioner Johnson. Let's see here. We could do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes for those items. So next, oh, you want to make an announcement?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
So tonight, it is my pleasure to announce that Laura Schlichting has been approved as the next principal of Locust Lane Elementary School. And Laura, you're here, so if you'd please stand. Laura received her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee, in 1988. She started with the Waterford Grade Ed School District in Waterford, Wisconsin, in 1989, and worked there until 2006. She taught sixth grade from 1989 to 1991, taught fourth grade from 1991 to 2004, and was a gifted and talented education coordinator from 2004 to 2006. While working for the Waterford Grade Ed School District, Laura also earned a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Aurora University. In 2006, she started with the Eau Claire Area School District as a gifted and talented resource teacher. She moved on to the Stanley Boyd Area School District in 2007, and taught third grade for one year and fourth grade for two years. Laura was also the coordinator of the new teacher mentor program for Stanley Boyd from 2008 until 2010. In 2010, she moved into the role of principal for Stanley Boyd Elementary School, where she stayed until 2012, when she was appointed the Director of Instruction for Stanley Boyd Area School District. Laura returned to the Eau Claire Area School District this summer as a gifted and talented teacher working at Meadowview and Flann and Putnam Heights. Laura, we welcome you as the new principal. I'm sure you've heard you have very big shoes to fill with Principal Jean's departure to the Director of Support Services, and we look forward to your leadership.
Thank you so much. You're a very hard teacher.
Hey, good to see you. Thank you. All right, so we have an individual considered resolution, the one that Commissioner Hamburg Boyle was referring to. This is, let's see, it's Assembly Bill 481, Senate Bill 355 is in the legislature to put restrictions on school boards going to referenda. And we have a resolution before us to register our opposition to those, that bill. So it's before us, I would entertain a motion to put it on the floor. So move. So we have a motion from Commissioner Luganbill. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Commissioner Johnson. Okay, discussion on this bill. Commissioner Johnson.
Is this resolution a WASB sample resolution that they gave to us, or do we draft this ourselves?
It's a WASB resolution, but it's a combination, it's not strictly the WASB. It's also taking another one that we found that we kind of combined.
Commissioner Jean.
Do we know how many other districts are doing the same thing?
I do not, but I do know the Altoona School Board has the WASB resolution before it tonight, like we do. I do not know other districts, though. Do we, are we interested in reading any portions of it? Or Commissioner Johnson?
Okay, well, since it's not totally someone else's work, just a couple of words that seem a little odd to me. In the fourth whereas, anti-local control, is there a better way to say that? So you guys can think about if anybody cares enough to change it. And then in the fifth whereas, in the second line, referenda are the only way many districts can access additional revenues, I think is more accurate than just resources in general. So I would offer that, I guess, as a friendly amendment. One, two, three, four, five. So the fifth whereas, that's kind of the big one in the middle of the first page.
Second line.
Second line at the end of that sentence, instead of resources, I would change that to additional revenues.
I'll second that.
So, okay, just to be clear, so we'll take that as a motion from Commissioner Johnson to change resources to additional revenues? And you have a second from Commissioner Dux? Why don't we just vote on that? Is there any discussion about that change? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, so we changed resources to additional revenue. Okay, do you have further comments?
Well, nothing that's really important.
Okay, more like typos or something? Okay.
Nothing I can't agree with, except the anti.
Okay, the anti-control. So if anyone has suggestions about the anti-local control on that, that would be, we'd take suggestions on that. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Do you want to just say decreases local control?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll take that as a motion from Commissioner Hamburg Boyle to change anti-local to decreases. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you.
All right, so we'll now say the bill decreases local control. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, so we've modified it that way. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
The one thing I wanted to say about, speaking as an individual in favor of sending this message, is from the board, so hopefully people will maybe be in agreement with me, is we talked a lot about the budget and the working capital, and how our working capital allows us to go out and borrow at a lower interest rate. If, as you read through the sample or the resolution, I've got the sample one in front of me here, is if we would not pass a referendum and we would have to wait two years, we would more than likely have to use our working capital in ways that we have not had to use it before. And I just wanted to make the point that that would also affect our borrowing at a lower interest rate and have a huge impact on many other things other than not being able to go to referendum. They make a good point here in the sense that part of the reason why this legislation is out there is because of voter fatigue on referenda. But what they didn't say was that if a referendum doesn't pass, sometimes it allows communities to go back to the table and really talk more deeply about their budgeting process and the fact that maybe they could recraft that referendum in order to have the community become more in favor of it. So you don't always get exactly what you want, but you also can work at getting there, which is, I think, what we're all about. So I'm deeply concerned about the fact that this takes away much local control in that discussion about how we fund our schools, especially in the light of school funding and how utterly broken it is.
Commissioner Johnson.
I guess I'll just add to that, because I think we get things like this in front of us, and we just, you know, pass them, and it becomes a document. And I think it's a really good opportunity to remind the public and ourselves how dire the current political environment is for public schools. A few years ago, I don't even remember the context of the article, but I do remember that I was quoted as saying that the current legislators, as their unarticulated agenda, are trying to destroy public schools. And a lot of people reacted and said, you're being dramatic, and, you know, how can you say that? And, you know, it was before so many of these things came down the pike, and I still believe it. And we are not sounding the alarm loud enough. This is frightening. They have created these revenue limits in 1993. Nobody thought they would still be here in 1993, in 2015. Everyone on both sides of the aisle agrees that the revenue formula is broken. And if people think about this, if we can't pass a referendum, when our revenues are frozen by the state, and we have, you know, modestly increasing health costs, we have modestly increasing transportation costs, we have modestly increasing costs of supplies, we will have to cut. And it's a reality that some schools will cease to function. The Eau Claire School District, I don't think will get to that point in the near future because we're a big enough organization and we do have some working capital, but we would have to engage in drastic cuts if referendums don't pass and we are, our hands are tied to do nothing for two years. That is absolutely spiteful and ridiculous actions by our legislators, and we can't let them get away with it. And, you know, I know I'm preaching to the choir in this room for the most part, but if your spouses or friends or neighbors or coworkers value education but vote for the people who are currently drafting this kind of thing, they have to contact them because they don't listen to the people who don't vote for them. We have to be able to go to referendum. It's like the last possible thing. And why would school districts think that this is a, we're going to do this every couple of months because it's fun and easy? It is so much work, and you know that it's so much work. And why we don't do it for years and years and years is because it means that we're going to give up our evenings for the next three months to try to explain to the community why we need it. It's just ridiculous to say that districts are doing this willy-nilly and need this sort of handcuffing by the state. Well said.
Well said, passionate, yes. Commissioner Dux?
I appreciate what you said, Wendy, and I couldn't agree more. And I am appalled that our legislators want to take away one of our tools of operation. And it's very upsetting, and we need to object to it. We're taking away some local control and some ability to take care of our financial problems. I worry about some of the smaller districts and the pressure that's going to put on them. And then it's a domino effect because we're going to be expected to pick up some pieces for them, too, and have no power to, any tools to work with. So I'm just chiming in on your wonderful speech.
Agreed. And I have heard that this would be dire for smaller districts in particular. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
I think it would be, I agree with you about the smaller districts, but I think this would be dire for any district. Eau Claire's a low-spending district. We were when we were locked in in '93, and I think we would be one of the largest districts that this would affect adversely probably first, or one of the first. And I think, I'm just going to suggest this, it's quite lengthy, but I think in order to get this on public television or the fact that this really explains it, and it's well worth knowing all the impacts it would have, that we should read it. Okay.
I'll either take a reader or I will read it, whichever you would like. I'm happy to do it. Do you want to read it? Okay, go ahead.
This is my bag. I'll read it from up there because I just have this one from my iPad here. I can read it from my iPad. Whereas State Representative Michael Schra, Republican Ashgosh, and State Senator Dewey Struble, Republican Cedarburg, have introduced legislation, Assembly Bill 481, Senate Bill 355, to replace, to place restrictions on school district referenda ballot dates and implement a two-year waiting period following failed referenda. And whereas under current law, a school referendum can coincide with a primary election, general election, or a special election can be called specifically for the referendum. Under this bill, a school district referendum would have to coincide with a regularly scheduled spring or fall general election. And whereas under current law, there is no limitation on whether or how frequently a referendum may be placed before voters. This bill would prevent a school board from bringing a new referendum request for two years if a referendum is voted down. And whereas the bill is, the bill decreases local control and does not show trust in locally elected officials. And whereas with state-imposed revenue limits on school districts frozen for the entire two-year state budget cycle for the first time ever, referenda are the only way many districts can access resources. Oh, yeah, okay, additional resources. This proposal will significantly impact declining enrollment districts, which comprise over 60% of Wisconsin school districts. Most seriously affected will be small rural school districts, which lack economies of scale and have few places to make cuts. Many of these districts have come to rely on periodic referenda to maintain programming and in some cases to continue to exist. Legislators should know that supporting this bill could have the effect of forcing districts to consider dissolving. And whereas, the bill will further exacerbate the trend of creating haves, who can pass referenda, and have-not, who cannot, and opportunities for students will further be determined by their zip code. And whereas the bill is extremely restrictive and inflexible for school boards, under the bill, in odd-numbered years, boards will only have one opportunity to go to referendum in the spring. If that referendum fails, boards will have to wait two years to the next odd-numbered year, where once again, there will only be one opportunity. In a state budget year, an odd-numbered year with only an April general election, a district would have to wait until the following spring to react to funding decisions made by the state. And whereas the bill is extremely restrictive and inflexible for school boards in another way as well, it also affects a variety of other funding mechanisms used by school boards to help them manage their finances, such as short-term borrowing, state trust fund loans, promissory notes and other borrowing, or insurance bonds. It provides that if a school board applies or adopts a resolution to use any of these funding mechanisms, and it is rejected by a majority of the electors of the school district, the school board may not use any of these mechanisms for two consecutive 365-day periods. When the legislature adopted Act 10, it provided a number of tools to school boards to help them better manage their finances. This bill proposes taking away tools districts use to help them manage their finances. This bill proposes taking away tools districts use to help them manage their finances. And whereas in arguing for the two-year moratorium, the cosponsorship memo being circulated states it is necessary because school boards are holding repeated referenda in order to either wear down the public or manipulate the process. Legislators should be aware that referenda can fail for reasons other than the community is unwilling to increase spending on their schools. There may be other issues in the plan that voters do not support, and when those issues are addressed, the subsequent referendum passes. For example, there could be disagreement over the plan for construction, not the need for new expanded facilities. In these instances, school boards are being responsive to the community. And whereas voting is not a difficult process, and voters in Wisconsin are intelligent, they do not need to be protected from themselves. If they do not support a referendum, they can vote no. And whereas referenda can provide an opportunity for a community to have a very focused and robust conversation about what it wants its public schools to be. School boards propose referenda because they believe doing so is in the best educational interests of the students and communities they represent. And whereas the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has formally adopted a policy, Resolution 1.25 stating that the WASB opposes limits on scheduling referenda. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, December 7, 2015, the Eau Claire Board of Education calls on Governor Walker, Senators Moulton and Vinaut, and Representatives Larson, Bernier, Wachs, and Petrick to oppose this legislation that would further curtail the already very limited set of revenue options available to Wisconsin school boards.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Johnson?
Will we personally mail our signed copy to each of those individuals listed?
That is the plan, yes. We can sign at the end of the meeting. Thank you. All right. What will we do without wireless? Yes, we do need to vote on it. Everyone ready to vote? Okay, we can do this, a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, great. Thank you for the research on that, Commissioner Ambacboyle, and getting that to us. Okay, so we adjourn to committee. Next, we have a strategic plan discussion and update. So Jim, looks like you're going to set something up here for us. While he's setting that up, this is to give an update on the strategic plan after we got some feedback from the strategic planning team and, and other organizations like PAC and the school leadership teams and the district office staff about the draft of the strategic plan. And then we'll talk about where we'll go from there.
Thank you and good evening. So yes, we're going to just give you an update on where we've been with the strategic planning process since it was presented to you back in October. And then, as you mentioned, President Spindler, you're going to have some time as a board to decide what sort of updates you'd like to have to the plan and some future direction. So this is just some steps taken since the presentation to the board, and these are not exactly in chronological order, and you'll, I hopefully understand as I go through them. So in the past, just over two months, there was a presentation on October 5 by Superintendent Hardbeck. And then the review was done by, principals have been very engaged in this process. They did a review right before then, when the draft had been prepared, and then they've done some updates and worked on that in their, in their monthly principal meeting in November and December as well. We did have the parent advisory council feedback done in this room on November 9. And then the principals, in the month of November, each met with their building staff to run a protocol to get feedback from each building. And then the data from that was assembled and reviewed by the strategic planning team last Wednesday evening. And that team then took that data along with the data from the parent advisory council, and then we'll kind of, we'll review some of the key findings from that work. So the, in the month of November, as we mentioned, we had PAC and the buildings, and there's a lot of data. And those of you that were at the meeting last Wednesday night know that there was quite a bit. But these were the pieces that we saw quite often. I'm sure there's some other pieces. This is not all-inclusive, but these are the ones that really rose to the top. Piece about focusing on attracting and retaining high-quality staff. The whole child has been brought up quite a bit. Collaborative culture, research-based practices, engagement from all stakeholders, and communication, how we communicate the plan, and the action plan going forward. Last Wednesday, there were several pieces that were, that were summarized, but the ones, big pieces that came back were a prior, that the priorities seemed to be very sound. There's a focus on that collaboration, high-quality staff, and the whole child. There's a, a strong alignment between the plans, what's happening in the buildings. And you heard that mentioned this evening, actually during the, during the first presentation by the memorial teachers, one of them. And then overall positive response to the plan. I'll say this on the third one. This is my 26th year in the district, and I have not seen a shift in priorities in terms of, of how the work is being done and conducted, move toward the building and have that building level responsibility engagement like I've seen this past year. So that, that shift with school improvement planning has been significant. I heard you, I think you heard it mentioned again this evening, unprompted from us. So this has been a very, very different perspective. In the past, there was much more expectation about waiting for downtown to set direction. In this particular, what we're seeing right now is setting some whats, like, these are the things that we need to accomplish, goals in four major areas, in the way that you conduct business through professional learning communities and collaboration. But the how has been really allowed at the building level with the leadership of the principal and their school improvement planning teams. And so I think you're seeing that alignment resonate with the people that responded to the, to the protocol in terms of how the strategic plan was aligned to their work. So next steps, and again, those of you that are here know that that's a very simplified version. But there's, so some of the feedback we need from the board is any request that you would have to edit. There was some mention on, I remember when we talked on Wednesday night, and we asked each team to come up with one suggestion, and one of the first things I heard was, "Only one," you know, because there's always that desire to get the editing pen out. So as a team, as a board, you would have to make a decision about any editing that you would want to have done to the plan. And I know that sitting in front of you are two versions of it. You have the PowerPoint that was, that Dr. Hardbeck led on October 5, which is a thicker packet. President Spindler also provided a one-page, quick version of it, real condensed, one-sided of that as well. So you would have to determine as a board if you wanted to make some of those changes. And from the work, those, many that were here on Wednesday night would have a feel for any changes that you might want to change with the priorities or the mission, vision, or slogan. And then the focus on action planning and assuring that the action planning is aligned with school boards. We heard a lot about definitions. We have some terms floating around that we think that need to be articulated so that we're all talking about the same thing. One was whole child and what we actually mean by that. And then also in that action planning, to really be certain that we are clear about the work that is already being done, because we're not starting from ground zero. This is a district that has a lot of strong work in place. We want to make sure that that is documented throughout the action planning process. That's it for a very short version of it, because I'm, I'm more, I'm very interested to hear what you have to say in terms of what the board would like for next steps.
Okay, good. So I think, so Jim and others are looking for feedback from the board on the major pieces of the strategic plan. I have some myself, but I'll see what board members have to comment on here. Commissioner Dux?
Maybe just for clarification. At what point do we talk about or see a monitoring plan in place so that we can come back and hear more outcome for the, the plan that we have created?
Yeah, so maybe Superintendent Hardbeck, there might be more questions for you. Have we thought ahead about, about how we would monitor our success in following the plan and the major components of our goals?
Yes. Under the first priority of academic achievement, one of the suggested action plans is to, is to actually create and articulate a plan that would give a clearly defined system of goal-setting. And I think that goal-setting would be at the board level, certainly at the district office, and also at the school level through the school improvement planning. And then there would be shared accountability for student achievement. And based on the discussion that you had in your work session about accountability, many of those items could be incorporated into the action plan.
Is your question though about how to monitor how we're doing in it, in the plan?
And getting feedback to the board.
So typically, when you do an action plan and you, you create smart, smart goals within the action plan, and it will designate in that plan who's responsible for carrying out that piece of the plan, what the timeline is, and then what the measure will be for determining whether or not you met the goal. So, you know, I don't know if, we talked about different kinds of data, the four different types of data, demographic data, achievement data. We would have to decide as a action team what those measures of accountability would be, and then there would have to be a schedule for reporting back to the board so the board could determine whether or not the district was actually meeting those stated goals.
Thank you. And that kind of goes to my question, one of my questions of, we did have that work session about our, our first goal, about multiple measures. And I want to make it clear what, at least my interpretation is, and I don't know if it's the whole boards or not. To me, multiple measures means more than just tests.
Right.
That we're measuring academic achievement. There are all sorts of performance measures, using rubrics, and, you know, using projects with rubrics and so forth. And so I, I want to make it clear that I'm looking for all those different kinds of measures, not just tests for measuring achievement as well as social, emotional gains. So I hope the board is interpreting it the same way I am on that, so. Other comments from board members on the plan? Commissioner Johnson?
So the, the, obviously, the vision, mission, and slogan are, I mean, during this summary is basically the pieces that we're responsible for, the big picture. We've done our goals. We had, after much debate, many, many months, if not years, had created a new vision just a couple of years ago. So first of all, I'd like to say I, you guys were much quicker in revising the vision than we weren't creating it the first time, but I really like the, the active additions, the challenge minds, build relationships, nurture individual growth, which, you know, adds to that preparing all kids for what's aft, what comes next. So I really like the additions there. I was a little more concerned about the mission, because that changed a lot. And as the, I've kind of taken on as my personal goal to remind us that, that we're not just preparing little participants in our economy. And so when creative and fulfilling were taken out of the mission statement, and knowledgeable and skillful were added in, along with responsible, which remained, that caused me some concern. So I don't want just responsible, knowledgeable, skillful people. I want them to be well-rounded Renaissance men and women. So I was concerned that creative and fulfilling were taken out, and, and I just, you know, I don't want that to be lost.
I appreciate that. I have a comment on that, but go ahead, Commissioner Dux.
Well, at my table Wednesday night, we just said we didn't like it. And I, I had similar reaction to it, and I didn't, I don't know, because it went through so many people, if we were doomed to adopt it or not.
So can I, I would like to just make a real quick suggestion, then you can continue your discussion. I would, I'm actually jotting the notes down that you're, you're talking about here of your concerns, and I'd like to suggest, just in terms of like the wordsmithing, because we all know how that can turn into, we can take your feedback and then send that to the consultant to work on that and bring that back to you. So just don't feel like you have to solve it all tonight, but I'm, we're jotting your notes down as you're, as you're talking right now. So just to give you an idea of process of how that can be resolved.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was at the table with Commissioner Dux also, and we, we immediately looked at it. We thought, the mission doesn't seem to match the vision in terms of intent or the slogan. And I also always thought of the mission as telling us what, who, and how things are done. And it doesn't seem to do that, unless the consultants interpret the mission differently than I do.
I, the, and the interpretation is follows, like, the professional learning community model, where mission is why you exist.
Why.
Vision is what you hope to become.
Yeah.
And then your, your values are how you choose to behave and goals are your outcomes you're after.
Okay, okay. Well, then, I definitely think it doesn't jive well with the vision. I would agree with Commissioner Johnson on parts of that, so. Commissioner Ambacboyle?
I agree.
Since I don't have other board members, I had a, a couple of the comments. I kind, what I went through is I looked at the strategic plan, and I tried to tie it to the system assessment, because there's a lot in common. They should be consistent with each other. You know, we did a lot of work and paid consultants for that system assessment. And just a couple of things. I want to make it clear, like, in the system assessment, it see, it said, we need, we need to identify a viable curriculum, right? And the need for assessments, which is why I brought up that point about multiple measures for assessments. Assessments should be thought of as broad, broad way, not just tests, for example. Also, related to our second board goal, I'd like to tie our board goal, which said, "A collaborative, intentional, and engaging climate and culture using research-based practice." And in the system assessment, it says, "It should identify differentiation and collaboration as important practices." So there's definitely a consistency between our goal and that part of the system assessment. And I want to make it clear that I interpret differentiation as giving autonomy and flexibility to our instructional leaders to do their job, to do the how part, right? In the assistance assessment, it says, where is that? Focus on the type, which are the expectations and the outcomes, but be loose on the variety of methods. And to me, that's what you need for differentiation. And I think that's consistent with our second goal, and that we, we need to allow that flexibility in our learning environments to happen, so that there's creativity. And yet, we still have clear goals that they need to meet in terms of learning outcomes. So I just want to make clear, that's how I'm interpreting those, and that's how I'm reading the system assessment in with our goals. Is that clear? Yes, yes, go ahead, Commissioner. I'm sorry, Superintendent.
Just as a point of clarification, so do, do you see that work being articulated under the academic achievement piece or under the collaborative cultures piece?
So I, I view, so the academic achievement piece are the outcomes that we, the learning outcomes that we expect. And to me, the second goal about the collaboration is how do we get there?
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of the methods of the organization. Organizational methods are collaboration, engaging, intentional, and at the classroom level, you need that flexibility of instructional practices for that to happen. That's, that's, so I think that's kind of the how part, while the first goal is the what, the outcomes. Did I answer that?
Kind of. I just have one more question.
Yeah.
So you're seeing that how part come under the collaborative cultures?
Yes.
And we have the, the plan to, the action plan focused around defining roles, responsibilities, reporting relationships, decision-making process, and resource allocation. And then we have an action plan that would be around supporting the professional learning community structures and professional learning. I'm thinking that might be the, the area that would come out in terms of your research-based collaborative.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, right. So I'm thinking of that as under goal two.
Mm-hmm.
And my understanding of PLCs, with my research on it, is, again, it, it's an environment for instructors and staff to work creatively, collaboratively, to come up with instructional practices.
Right.
That work in their classroom for their situation at that time. And that, to me, is that collaborative piece that's part of goal two, as well as, as well as that. So hopefully I answered.
No, I, I think we're on the same page.
Okay.
It's just not articulated in the words you use.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
But we could, we can work on that.
Okay. And again, I think it's important, because we got the strategic plan, we got this system assessment. I want them to be clear to all of us how they're coming together and how they should come together according to our goals, so. Yes, Commissioner Dux?
Are we planning to have another work session on this?
No, I'm not sure where we're at next here. So Jim will go back, I assume, and, and work on some of our comments on this. And I guess we'll have to talk about agenda setting, or the board can give us advice. Do you want them to just bring it back to the board with the changes? Or how, how would you like, Superintendent, what would you say?
One of the things we'd like to do is to discuss your feedback with the consultants who helped put the plan together, because one of those consultants led this, helped lead the systems assessment. So I think she'll be very familiar with our district and the outcomes of the system assessment and the recommendations. And maybe in talking to her about what you feel is missing, she'll be better able to kind of like help us slot that in.
Okay. Okay, so we'll let you guys do that, and you let us know when it's back and ready for us to look at? Okay. Okay. Hopefully, does that answer?
Yeah, it just feels like we did this by committee. You know, it's not totally brought together.
Um, go ahead.
So, I, I like your idea of the kind of aligning those ideas with the, with the systems assessment.
Go ahead.
So, just, just so that we can be really clear about this, the system assessment did inform the strategic plan, and if you'll think back to some of our early planning sessions, we talked about, I think we spent a lot of that first and second meeting, talking about the system assessment and what we learned and, and how it might play out in the strategic plan. I think probably the questions are in the final product and how it was stated, and maybe the language is just a little bit different than it was in the system assessment, and we could fix that.
Commissioner John was next.
Okay. As a board, when do we want to implement this? I think that's going to give the administrations a, a, a good understanding of when they need to get back to us. So, I, I think that's a discussion that we need to seriously have.
Okay, I'll take suggestions. I mean, kind of take, I don't know how long it'll take to get the consultants.
Yeah, we'll reach out to them immediately to, and see that what their timeline is, but we'll hopefully have something back to you as soon as possible.
I, I could see January. We should be able to, to hopefully have a final product.
Yeah, this is significant, but you're, you're probably going to want to be able to see something to, to get some feedback to as soon as possible.
So, let's, let's plan on January, then.
I like that idea.
Okay. Commissioner, how about Boil?
I wanted to bring up the other piece of the, the systems assessment that came out loud and clear was consistent communication across all levels. And so, where people were very aware of what was going on across the district and initiatives and all those, because that came out as people weren't, weren't getting what they needed to know. And that's hard when you've got lots going on. But I remember that that was brought out from the systems assessment that we really needed to work on, so everybody, yeah. So, I can see that fitting almost in every one of our goals, but would like to specifically know how that will be enhanced so that people will have their questions answered and people will all feel on the same page.
Okay. At the risk of dominating a little too much, I had, I had, at our table last, at the last session, at the strategic priorities, I don't know if we can put those up, if you've got them there, just a list of the, the six of them. Just had the six strategic priorities. I just had some comments, and I don't know if it's an indication of changes, but maybe more questions. Yeah, so, those at the bottom down there, those strategic priorities. To me, I, I kind of think of the first two, academic achievement and student social emotional growth, as basically saying, our first goal and our sec, our first goal, goal one of the board. I mean, our, right? Our, our goals are about academic achievement and social emotional growth in our first goal, right? Essentially, that's what it seems like they are. There are two goals, or one goal together in two strategic priorities. And the other parts, at least the next two, the third and fourth on the list, are like the hows, which is sort of part of our goal two. So, I, I just, I just don't know if those, I mean, are they, I mean, are the first two really strategic priorities? Because those are just our goals, right? Our goals, are they any different than our goals, really? Is my question. I don't know if, go ahead, Detective.
I'll crack at that, okay. You know, I think that when your, when your goals are structured around the, as you said, the what, the improving academic achievement, closing the achievement gap, and nurturing the social emotional development of students, those are your priorities. And how are you going to make them a reality? You know, are they just going to sit there as aspirational goals rather than actual goals to see how we can do this? And I think that under the conversations that, you know, people had either in the forums or the planning teams or the feedback that we got from the focus groups and the surveys, these were the things that kept coming up, you know, and, which were already in your goals. But it's like, people want to see them in action.
And the third and fourth, then, are those hows? I mean, organizationally, at least, as an organizational structure. Okay, or culture.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Anything from other board members on this topic? Commissioner Luhkindel?
I, I, I don't like to be the minority a lot, and I'm not quite sure how to articulate how I'm feeling about this, but fifteen thousand dollars later and a lot of hours spent, I don't feel really inspired by the strategic plan. And I don't think a lot of staff are feeling inspired, and then when I go in the community and ask how they feel about it, they don't know about it, because we had one community event on it, and that was it. So, I don't know how to articulate where we need to take that, but I just have a lot of lingering concerns, and having never been a part of this process, maybe my expectations are too high. But that's kind of where I'm at right now, reading through this and looking at it.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I've got a question.
Commissioner John?
Marianne, I believe we, we talked the, a couple of days after the community forum, I believe somebody was supposed to check with the consultants to see if they're willing to do another community forum so we can get the word out. How, how did that go?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the consultants are willing to come back and, you know, hold additional forums to explain the plan, to get more feedback about it. But I think you, you need a kind of a final draft to present to the public and, and then go forward from there. And so, based on the feedback that's been given tonight, I think that the consultants will have enough to work with to be able to do that.
Commissioner Boo. Boo, go ahead.
My interest is also very similar to the previous speakers. And what I'm about to say may be micro-management, but it's serious that I say it. I am interested in how, knowing, knowing the information, not necessarily the detail, but the ideas that the district will take to share this information with district employee so that, A, they understand the behavior of the district. In other words, the value, how the value will be role model. And those values are very specific: honesty, respect, responsibility, compassion, courage, and justice. I believe that it starts with the top. In other words, people who are in the leadership have that bigger responsibility to role model what it is that we value. So, how you do it, I'm not sure. And I don't want to macro-manage, manage what you do, but I really want the, all of us to know the importance of how to get the buy-in, how to get the community's support, and in it, as a matter of fact, goal number three, board and O'Clare, district staff will work to strengthen connection with the community to support students. So, in other words, if we don't even help our community to know what it is that we shoot for, it's hard for them to support us to educate their children. And again, I don't know how this will be done, but I'd like us to know the importance of getting them done.
Commissioner, how about Boil?
Would that be a specific communication plan? A branding of the, the plan, what it feels like, what it looks like? I don't think we've talked about it in that depth. It, it really defines who we are as a district, and I'm not sure we've had that conversation that deeply, or the communication to allow us to do that across the district.
And that can be part of the action plan, and Commissioner Johnson mentioned about the vision statement that had been worked on prior. And our staff is, we've seen even through our surveying, our staff is very familiar with that statement because of the branding that the board has done prior to this. So, you have experience doing this, and I think some of it is that it's not always necessarily flashy work, but it's consistent work by the board that really made a difference with that vision statement in the past, and I think that you have some history on how to do that.
Okay.
Well, I don't think any of us want this to disappear. I mean, it's, it's who we are and who we aspire to be, and I think that we have to work at it in some way. Like you said, have a plan to let people know what it is, and we, several of us have said that, so I don't think we're going to let this drop if it's up to us, and I'm, I'm very pleased that everybody feels this way.
Okay, good. So, to wrap up, we'll get something back from the consultants in January. I hope you could work on the monitoring piece, you know, what are the, I'd like to start seeing, you know, what concretely are we monitoring? What, what kind of measures are we getting for the different levels? I'd like to start seeing that some more. What are these measures that we're using?
And I think that's going to come up through your action planning, because you'll articulate that, and I think if you've, it'd be interesting just to quickly show you like a, a school improvement plan. But again, they'll state their overall goals, but then underneath that in their action planning, they'll talk about the milestones and the tools that they're going to use to measure along the way.
Yeah.
And that's the same sort of thing that the action planning will build into it.
Okay, so, at some point, we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go through that more.
Absolutely.
Because I'm, I'm very curious about how that will work. And then some kind of communication plan to the community about how we will, how we discuss that, perhaps with staff more. I know we talk to staff a lot already in many ways. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Oh, any public comment on this? The hot topic of strategic planning. Okay. All right, compensation committee update. So, we're going to get a, kind of a brief overview of where the compensation committees are. They're not finished yet, but it's always good to kind of keep us up to date where we're at with those.
So, tonight, you're going to see kind of a series of reports that the Budget Development Committee has already seen, but I don't think the full board has gotten a complete overview. And, you know, over the past few months, there's been considerable discussion among board members about the possibility of holding a referendum that might be used to fund ongoing operational expenses, facility needs, and make our strategic plan a reality. And as you've discussed this, you've talked about going possibly as early as April 2016 or as late as November 2016. If such a referendum were to be posted to the voters, the additional funding would help the district cover its current projected deficit of $3.9 million for 2016-17 and address other necessities required to operate and maintain the schools throughout the district. We're looking at a situation with the state funding that over the next three years, we could, you know, reach as high as a $9 million deficit if the funding sources do not change. So, tonight, the staff is going to update you on information that has been previously shared with the Budget Development Committee, and they're also going to give you additional information that, that either the committee or individual board members have requested. And I think some of this answers that question that's been often asked at the public forum about are we going to consider a referendum to maintain, or do we want to expand and, and do as much as we possibly can in terms of creating kind of a world-class school division or district? So, one item that is to be discussed is the district's current budget deficit, which we've already said is scheduled to be $3.9 or $4 million for, for this year. And this money is needed to maintain the current educational and operational needs of the district. And why do we have this deficit? Because of the unpredictability of state funding. This is the first year since the revenue caps were put in place that the state has not given additional revenue per student. It has been as low as $50 per student and as much as $200 per student. But this year and for the next year, it's zero, and that creates a deficit spending for us. So, some other items that we want to discuss with you tonight are class size. There's been a great deal of attention to class size and to reducing class sizes, funding staffing positions that enable us to meet the school board's targeted class size for all students at all levels, just as the teacher said tonight, provide students with the opportunity for more individualized, personalized instruction and for individual interventions that will help us to increase student achievement, close the achievement gap, and nurture the social emotional development of our students, which is your goal. We also want to bring you up to date on facilities to address the current building, maintenance, and safety needs as outlined in the five-year capital plan, and to hear about some projected costs for expanding or updating current facilities to industry standards. You'll get some information about technology and what it's going to cost to maintain levels of technology use for students and staff, and to ensure not only for instruction, but also for the required assessments that the state gives, which are given online. You know, I think it's imperative that our students leave our schools prepared to be competitive in the marketplace or in, you know, post-secondary education, and in order to have that preparation, they have to have access, and they have to know how to use 21st century tools and, and, and technology and skills. And then finally, we're going to talk, and we're going to start with this tonight, with Kay and Abby talking to you a little bit about compensation. And as you know, since Act 10, it has been increasingly challenging for the district to sustain its salary schedules at all levels. Consequently, we are facing the demand of being able to attract and keep the best, most highly qualified staff in a job market that is keen, to say the least. You know, what we hear is that in other districts, they have the ability to negotiate with new hires in a way that we do not, because we have so many employees who have been frozen at their entry levels. And, you know, we see that not as many young people are going into education as they once did, and many baby boomers are choosing to retire or take on other professions or other opportunities at this time. So, there isn't the pipeline that there once was for teaching. And in order to get the best and brightest, we have to be able to have something that is adequate for people to be able to have, have their compensation and have, you know, make a, a reasonable, have a reasonable standard of living. And so, as a district, you know, I think when I see those things on the strategic plan that talk about recruiting and retaining a highly qualified staff, I kind of see that as being able to get the very best people in front of our students for as long as possible. And that's something that has come through in every discussion that we've had, whether it's been through strategic planning, or it's been through referendum discussion, or it's been in the forums. You know, I think our community supports our staff, and I think they see the value of that staff. So, you're going to get some cost estimates tonight in those four areas, and you may see some additional information that you haven't seen before based on what we talked about in the Budget Development Committee. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Kay, and she's going to give you an overview of what the compensation committees have been doing thus far.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. So, the, since the last.
Thank you for the overview, by the way.
Thank you. Since the last time that I came to present to you in terms of the update for the work the compensation committees have done, we've really been focusing on looking at different Each one of the groups has focused on creating processes as we move forward that do these four things here, that we attract and retain, as we've all talked about and heard about before, that we minimize the gaps between the labor market wages and the district's wages, because our C-Biz information showed us that there's definitely gaps there, that we minimize the internal inequities, and this is what Dr. Hardbeck just alluded to, that we've got people that have been frozen for years and new people coming in, and therefore we have these internal inequities that exist across all boards. And that whatever system we come up with, it's sustainable. And that goes back to the predictability that Mariano's talking about. And that's been a major focus of the work of these groups as well. But whatever it is we come up with needs to be sustainable so we're not back in the same boat again. So I'm breaking it down into some bits and pieces of each of the three groups, the hourly group, the non-affiliated group, and the certified group. So starting first with our hourly committee, we reviewed the labor market data from C-Biz that we had received and went through that kind of with a fine-tooth comb. We looked at differential wage salary increases between positions that have to do with the labor market, and this has to do with the candidacy pool. So I know it's no surprise to the board that we struggle to fill our SCA positions, our special education assistants, and you know that because there's been multiple public comment from our employees who have shared that that's an area that's very hard to fill. So there's discussion about should our wage schedule be differentiated based upon the candidacy pool and hard-to-fill positions? And we've had those conversations. We haven't come to resolutions, but we've had those conversations. We've also talked about wage reclassification in terms of the hourly group, specifically in this area, the classified group, to take a look at the labor market and job responsibilities. So we have a populace of classified employee positions that haven't been kind of upgraded in a long time. And so what we did is we took a look at the job responsibilities that those titles currently have in conjunction with what the market is for those positions. And along with that, we created a subcommittee from that committee, from the hourly committee, and then just people out in our buildings who work in these areas. They came together and worked with the HR staff to reevaluate all of the job descriptions in their areas because they were so out of date and didn't coincide, what it was they did on a regular basis didn't coincide with what we had on paper. So we needed to bring those together so that we could kind of bridge that gap and that everybody was speaking from the same, from the same chapter, so to speak. And then we've had conversations about longevity and what that play, what if any role that plays in a new compensation model. Again, no decisions have been made, but there's been ample discussion about it. Continuing on with the hourly committee, we proposed a wage-salary schedule and presented that for discussion in December. So that was our December meeting. What we did with that was we included a market value conversion that looked at increasing the starting wage for all positions to a minimum of 75% of the median market. Now, that's a lot of mumbo jumbo if you don't do this stuff all the time. So I met with Abby, and we kind of broke it down to make things as simplistic as possible. So if you look at the market value of a position being up to $20, that that's the value of that position, the median of that position is going to be $10. And our goal is to try to get our employees to 75% of that $10 mark, which means that in this case, we'd be looking at $7.50 for the position where in the market, it's up to $20.
As a starting wage, you're saying? That's what it's for a starting?
Yes. Yep, exactly. So kind of breaking it down into that 20, 10, and 7.50 really kind of helped to paint the picture because all of these positions are just all over the board. And so this kind of gave a clear indication about what the median is for that market value, and then our goal isn't even to get to that median, it's just to get to 75% of that. So in this case, you could see that it would be 7.50 for a position that in the market would be valued at $20. We focused on providing for steps and levels that were more sustainable and predictable, which we'd already talked about, making sure that as we move forward, we're not creating another system that does just what we have now, which makes us freeze our employees where they're at because we can't sustain it and it's not feasible. And also giving people kind of that career path. Well, if I come in at this, having a salary schedule set up so that I know in X amount of years, I'll be here, assuming that the district's able to fund that salary schedule. And then we looked at step and level adjustments of a 1.77%. So that 1.77% comes from calculating within the past five years, kind of the average CPI increases that we've seen, as well as making sure that, again, that schedule is sustainable, and then looking at internal comparisons of hourly staff. So originally, that 1.77% was 1.75%. That was what we were targeting until we got to the Buildings and Grounds salary schedule, which was already set up at a 1.77% differentiation between their steps. And so to be consistent and not bring one group down, we modified the 1.75 to be 1.77 so that all the calculations-
Okay. Just to be, just for clarification, this is going to be on top of whatever CPI we give for base wage, correct?
Correct. This would be like moving from step A to step B, it would be a 1.77% increase. Or from, you know, level purple to level green, whatever it turns out to be. But each one of those steps or level movements would be an increase of 1.77%. And then depending on CPI and negotiations, that would then increase that due to the cost of living increase.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Still working with the hourly group, we proposed during our discussions, looking to increase those steps and levels I just talked about from the typical three, which we have now, to five, and having five steps or levels for the hourly groups, which is similar to what the current Buildings and Grounds schedule is. You'll kind of see comparisons to the Buildings and Grounds schedules as we go through this. And that's because in working with Bob Butler, out of all of our salary schedules, that was the one that was the most solidified in terms of kind of appropriate and sustainable steps from year to year, as well as being realistic with the CPI increase. And so we're trying to make sure that we don't lose that and throw the baby out with the bathwater, and then simply taking what it is we're looking to do and kind of tie it into what's already being done in that employee group. Criteria to move salary, to move forward on the salary schedule. So we've talked about some of these things. Nothing is set in stone. Two of the very, very common and easy to understand ones are length of service in the district. So you're here for another year, you would move a step, as well as having a successful evaluation by your supervisor. In some of the employee groups, that's going to be needing to be defined in terms of what successful means. But overall, you know, you're making progress toward the goals that you should have for that particular position. We've also talked very kind of superficially about completion of the district's wellness program requirements. And I don't want to get into that a lot tonight, other than to say that we've talked about it a little bit because there's a lot of logistics tied into that, and we're not even sure at this point in time whether or not that's something that we can, if that's something that we can do based upon all of the, we know that it's legal, but in terms of making it work in our district, there's some hoops that I have to jump through with different entities, and we're in the process of that. But I wanted to make sure that I at least listed it so that you knew that that was something that was being considered. But at this point, that's about as much information as I have on that one.
Can I, can I ask?
Sure.
Why would that be included in the salary when it's already tied into insurance rates? So it's like they would be getting a double whammy.
Well, because we would take away the insurance component. So right now, if you don't successfully complete the wellness program and you're part of, you receive our district insurance, then there's a nonparticipation fee that you're assessed of $1,000, which, as you can imagine, doesn't sit well with people. But there's still people who say, you know what, I just really don't want to do this. I don't think that it's the district's business to make me jump through these hoops to, you know, try to be well. And so they choose not to do it. So the thought was, well, if we could take away that nonparticipation fee and tie it into, okay, if you don't want to do it, you don't need to do it, but you need to understand you're not going to move forward on the salary schedule because we're really focusing on having healthy employees. So the component that we're still working through is we have about 315 employees who aren't on our district insurance. And so for those folks, we don't, we don't require anything of them. But many districts still do, and they pay for them to be able to have that annual physical and do the biometrics so that regardless of whether or not you're on our insurance, from a district standpoint, our focus is to make sure that you're a healthy individual. And so if we can do something at a minimal cost to make sure that you get those, those steps in the health area, then that's something that we wanted to look into. So that's what that component comes from. And if it were something that would happen one day soon, then it would be something that we'd no longer have that nonparticipation penalty for. And then overall, again, that there was no new wage schedule that was created for the Buildings and Grounds staff. As I said before, theirs seemed to be right where it needed to be, and we didn't need to do a value conversion for the market because we weren't trying to get to the 75% of the median for them because they're already there. So there is no need to do a conversion for that particular group. Moving to the non-affiliated group, again, we looked at the C-Biz information. We examined the per diem salary differentials and the classifications of particular positions in comparison to other non-affiliated options. So for example, what that's all saying is that we looked at our current schedule and said, wow, we've got principals who might be interested in being directors, but it would either be a lateral move for them, or they'd actually have to take a pay cut to be able to take that director position in the district. And so we needed to look at those differentials and see if we can't figure out a way to fix that. In addition to that, and this is no surprise to you, we looked at the gross difference in the per diem allocations between administrative staff. I think Dan's presented this to you on numerous times about kind of the dark in the doorway as well as actual contract days and the fact that there's a great discrepancy between that per diem rate across all the administrative ranks. And then we examined additional compensation for those members of non-affiliated who pursue and attain their doctorate license. Currently, those individuals get a $500 kind of additional stipend every year. And when we look at what we pay out for and how we recognize the National Board certified teachers, there's a huge discrepancy between these two. And so there's conversation about looking at that. We also examined a new 15-16 salary schedule that included a 2% increment. So again, those steps from purple to green, red to blue, A to B, those increments would be at a 2% increase each year. It was felt that those would be something that could be predictable and sustainable and we wouldn't wind up freezing people where they're at. And then again, when we look at longevity, due to the compression of the schedule that we're looking at, it's kind of up in the air what role longevity will play in that. There's been some pretty heated discussions about that, and it'll be interesting to see where that all plays out in the end. But moving forward in the system that we're looking at, we haven't yet decided how longevity fits into there. The discussion regarding criteria, again, for moving forward, successful supervision from the, or supervisory evaluation, the length of service, and again, that potential wellness component.
Can I ask a question there?
Sure.
I don't understand why longevity is a separate discussion from length of service. It's the same thing. If you're here a long time, you get more money. And so the longevity should be built in to that criteria of length of service.
And that's the conversation. So in our current system, which, you know, has been frozen for a long time, it was, you know, for most groups, 3%, 6%, 9% after so many years of service. Looking at this, there's discussion about just building that into the schedule, like you said, making those particular benchmarks a little greater than perhaps in this case that 2%. Or saying, you know what, you're moving through the system. When you get done with the system, there's no more steps for you to go. That's when longevity would kick in, and there'd be a separate column that says, well, you don't have any potential, any more potential growth earnings. So therefore, here's, here's an additional column that would get added onto that because you've gone as far as you can go.
So I still don't get why you would call it different things. It's just another step. It's just another level.
Well, because that, if you got to that point, then I believe that the discussion has been that perhaps that longevity payment would be maybe an additional $1,000 a year. I'm just picking in a brad of thin air. So if you were maxed out at the top of your salary schedule, then it would be an additional $1,000 on top of that. So then the next year, if that increased because of the CPI like Chu was talking about, then that longevity would still be $1,000 on top of whatever your maxed out is. So those are the conversations that are happening in terms of which way is the best way to pursue that? Is it to build it into the current schedule where those current benchmarks are and kind of beef up each of those steps? Or to wait until you go through the whole schedule and then at the end, say, okay, now you've been here long enough to qualify for longevity, and this is what that's going to be?
Commissioner Dux.
We kind of got stuck on that committee with nine years, you're already at the top of your schedule.
Mm-hmm.
So what was, why was it at nine? I can't remember.
It was 9%. So there's three benchmarks, 3%, 6%, and 9%. And they happen at different years for different employee groups, and some employee groups are eligible and others aren't. Some positions within an employee group are eligible where others aren't. And that was all the work that the longevity committee did a couple of years back, which then everything got tabled until all of this work could be done to see how that would fit together.
Commissioner McBoyle.
We know longevity or years of service will be there because I think that's important to everybody. We're just not quite sure how it's going to happen.
Right, where it's going to figure in.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
The 500 for a doctorate?
Mm-hmm.
What, and your comment about national boards? The 500 for a doctorate is yearly, right?
Correct. Yep, they get that annually.
And the national boards is just a one-time thing?
One-time.
So was it to bring the national board up?
No, I think that the conversation was about looking at the 500 for the PhD and looking at increasing that.
Okay. But yeah, because it is more than a national board because that's just a one-time thing.
Yep, over the years, correct.
Yeah, yeah, so it's probably not the best comparison.
I would just like to comment on Commissioner Johnson's. I agree with her that if we can simplify it, the more, the better.
Mm-hmm.
Because if, you know, at least in a lot of cases, if longevity is basically length of service, well, let's try and keep it one so that we're making it simpler as much as you can. I think it makes a lot of sense, so.
Okay.
Oh, Commissioner.
I just am wondering if, what kind of a discussion took place about performance-based incentives for any of these different groups?
There were none because I believe the board direction was that we were not interested in pursuing kind of like merit pay would be another way to term that. And so all of our conversations have been about, I don't believe that the employees were interested in that, and I know that the information from the board was that that wasn't something we were interested in pursuing. So there hasn't been any conversations around that.
Commissioner Ligonbill, one of the things that has been discussed is this goal of collaboration. And performance-based pay sometimes separates people and makes them more competitive than collaborative with one another. And so that was another, I think, thing that played into the discussion as well.
And that's true. That would have been kind of the employees' take is, you know, why would I work collaboratively with the guy next door? Somehow that's going to negatively affect me from a financial standpoint. Kind of took away the whole PDIP push that we've got going on. So, okay, non-affiliated, we, again, that 2%. Oh, we already did this one. So we talked about all those. So certified committee. For the certified committee, we looked at four distinct salary schedule options and shared that with the committee. And again, nothing has been formalized yet, but the overwhelming response from the group was that they were interested in a performance-based, I'm sorry, a percentage-based level approach for that model. So again, looking at formulating details that are going to create a schedule to determine the long-range sustainability and competitiveness of the grid, specifically the competitiveness. Because depending on where you focus the money on the grid, obviously, one populace of employees, depending on how long you've been here, in most cases, will benefit more than the others. And so there's been a lot of discussion about where that money goes so that we're competitive and we don't lose people, but that we're also attractive to get people here to begin with, to not lose them. So lots of conversation about that. And then again, looking at the criteria to move forward, advanced education regarding a master's degree, there's been some discussion about professional development, which I'll touch on in a second, and then the other three components, like the rest of the groups. We talked about the national boards and how that plays in with what we currently do. We discussed again longevity and how that would fit into the new schedule. So I'll take back to the group, Rich, what it was that you had shared. And then we talked about, similar to the first group, developing a schedule that addresses the labor market factors. So again, in the teacher ranks, we're talking tech ed teachers, candidacy pool of sometimes zero, where perhaps a fourth-grade teaching position is still going to garner us hundreds of applicants. So a vast difference between those two, not, obviously not the work that's involved for those people, but in terms of a candidacy pool and being able to attract people into the district, that's been something that we've talked about. Discussion on the scope of external professional development. So here's what I had alluded to earlier. Nearly all of the salary schedules in the district, old ones and new ones coming out, rely heavily on external professional development and meeting external professional development standards to be able to move forward on the salary schedule. As we talk about this, and Bob Butler and I kind of go back and forth a lot, he's like, but Kay, you have to have something built into the schedule which kind of holds some people back because financially, you can't afford to move everybody forward. So there needs to be some things- As we talk about this, and Bob Butler and I kind of go back and forth a lot, he's like, but hey, you have to have something built into the schedule which kind of holds some people back because financially, you can't afford to move everybody forward. So there needs to be some things built in that just naturally would hold folks back. In our current schedule, that's, you know, the bachelor's plus eight, sixteen, twenty-four. If you don't take the credits, you don't move forward, so that naturally holds some people back, which makes the schedule more sustainable and fiscally able to meet the requirements. However, when we look at being able to develop something that's going to create that same system, again, most of the systems are built on external professional development. We have very little need for that. We're very focused on our internal professional development. We've built a calendar and around our community and how we get to that point so that we can kind of grow our own for what's important to us here in Eau Claire. So every time Bob says that we need to have professional development, I say, are you serious? We just created a calendar that has nine additional built-in days. And so we talk about that a lot, but then, you know, his question to me is, so what are we going to have that's going to just naturally, through the progression of the system, not move everybody forward every year by having a successful evaluation and being there for another year? So we're having those kind of heated discussions amongst at least Abby and Bob and I. And I think that the conversation that I asked Bob that we have with the certified group at our December meeting is, I think that we need to leave it up to the employees who are part of developing this to determine whether or not we want to have a schedule that has things built in to hold people back. Because if we say we don't want to do that, then the kind of flip side of that is that the schedule is very different, and you're going to have many more steps at much smaller increments, but there won't be anything, any kind of external things that are going to hold you back from moving forward. You'd virtually be guaranteed to move forward every year if you did what you were supposed to do the year prior, and if you continue to be with us for the next year, but your increment is going to be so much less, and you're going to have to work so many more years to get to the top of the schedule. So I keep encouraging Bob that the next time that we meet with the groups here next week, we need to have that conversation. Because I think that we're just assuming that people are going to want to have a condensed schedule with bigger increments, but at the cost of what, making sure that we build something and that kind of holds people back. So that's a big point of discussion as we move forward.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes. Why create artificial barriers? Absolutely, it should be time. And then you don't have these discussions where I'm frozen for three years because we can't afford to give it to you. If it's not beneficial to go and get eight credits, then don't incentivize going to get eight credits. If national board certification is beneficial, and you can see that in action, then incentivize it. If it does, if it's not, and these teachers are fantastic and they're going to reflect on themselves anyway, then don't incentivize it. I mean, why create a system artificially? That's silly.
And that's been the conversation. And part of this is, part of all the conversations surrounding both the administrative portion of non-affiliated as well as the certified group, is the fact that the ballgame's really changed in terms of getting those advanced degrees. So in the past, you could go and get your eight, sixteen, twenty-four credits, get a master's degree, and whatever price tag that costs you from a personal level, your placement on the salary schedule would make up for that in a pretty short period of time. Now, to go and get those credits, it's so astronomical compared to what we're able to compensate on the backend for the work of doing that, that very few people are pursuing that unless they're looking for an additional licensure. But to just go out and get a master so that you're, you know, better read in being a reading teacher, many people are shying away from that because it's simply too expensive and the return on investment from the district standpoint to them on a salary schedule just isn't there.
Commissioner Dux is next.
I'm kind of feeling like you're making all the decisions for them, and I'm feeling like teachers should be able to have a variety of ways that they can move forward. They can take the eight credits. They can become a national certified teacher. They can make that decision on their own. They can be outstanding in their professional development in several ways, not just one way. And I know at the university, we had any number of ways that we could move forward. So I don't think you have to nail it down quite so much.
Well, and in terms of your comment about if they want to take eight credits, so the system that the group is looking at has a bachelor's column as well as a master's column. So if somebody did take those credits to get that additional degree, there is a recognition for that on the salary schedule to move them forward. But it wouldn't be the only way that they're going to be able to move, which is kind of the system that we have now. Because you're frozen, the only way you're going to get there is if you take additional credits. And with the change in the licensing in the state, and the fact that each person that comes new into our district isn't required to have six credits every five years, they simply need to have a professional development plan approved through the state, many of our employees aren't taking those credits. Because again, they're too costly and they don't need them to recertify their license.
I understand, but you have to have some criteria that they can follow. And if you narrow it down so much, you're not going to have a way to do it. And I just suggest that you leave it in there. That's all I'm saying.
That we leave what in?
The credit accumulation.
And it is.
Maybe three people do it this year, you know, but that's okay. They've done it.
If I understand it right, and let me see if I can clarify, they, well, depending which system we're talking about.
Correct.
They may move forward based on getting credits, but to many employees, it's not worth it because it costs more in credits.
I understand that.
Okay.
Why eliminate it?
My suggestion to eliminate it is if it's not beneficial to students by merely going to accumulate credits, and teachers are being reflective and learning within these, all these extra days that we've built into the calendar and we're helping them to learn and grow internally, why send them out to, you know, St. Mary's College to sit for three weeks in the summer just so that they can bank the credits? Is that class really beneficial? If it is, I don't know. But if the committee and the administrators and the educators decide that credits are beneficial to students and to teacher growth, so be it. But if it's not really beneficial, why include it?
I'm just saying that a lot of people like to learn, and they use it over time. It may not be directly impacting their class, but they like to learn. And that's valuable to you as an educator, as an educated person.
So it's really a difference in philosophy between the two, really.
Commissioner McBoyle.
I had a couple of things. I always look at the national board process, does have a state stipend still there, and I just was talking that it will remain there. And if you are in a high-poverty school, it's, you know, when Libby Burmaster was there, she hyped it up. So, I mean, it's an incentive for our national board teachers to teach in schools that have high needs, and that's why they did it. And oftentimes, you can then take the national board stipend and pay for your master's degree. And you just need five years of teaching experience to start the process. We still are second in the state, next to Milwaukee, but we're by a slim margin, so, you know, you all know I'm a strong proponent of that, whatever. My other thing was dual certification. I don't see that on here, but there is, at the preschool level, we say those people need both a regular and special ed license.
Correct.
So is that on, I mean, that's huge when you think about the added time and the added whatever to do that. Has that been?
It hasn't been discussed. We're gathering that information that you had asked about so that we can take it back to the committees in December.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I just, I just think a variety is better than narrowing it down. And so it gives people more opportunity. I'm still going to workshops. I'm still learning. And you may just learn one thing in one workshop, but it's worth the effort.
Commissioner Johnson.
Well, Commissioner Dux, that's exactly why I don't know that we need to put into a salary schedule, because educators and, you know, educated people by nature continue to learn. You don't do that because you're going to get reimbursed for it in some way. You do it because you're, you know, it feeds your mind and you're a better person for it. And I, you know, suspect people will do that instead of saying, hey, I've got to find eight credits, as opposed to, I'm going to spend my time doing what I find intrinsically valuable without the artificial incentive.
Was this it, the last slide?
Sorry.
I.
I think we're pretty close.
Okay.
So the only other part was to say that we focused a lot of discussion on the effects that our current schedule has where we've been frozen, and how that looks to employees as we look to make that transition to whatever the new schedule is. So a lot of discussion about if you've been here for six years and you're frozen on step two, when we get to a new schedule, are you put in at step six or seven? Or are you put in at the step closest to where you currently are that's going to give you a minimum of a $500 raise? So that's the conversation that we've been having for this group because everything is so kind of convoluted because of those freezes. And then the next steps, all the committees are meeting, again, here next week, and we're going to be looking at that transition criteria to new compensation models and what that looks like, and how can we move people forward without damaging anybody? And then those meetings are scheduled for the 16th and 17th. It's a questions, but we've had a lot already.
Great, thanks. I do have one question, but first, Commissioner Luganville, given your question, I was thinking, you probably haven't seen the original charge of this committee, so.
And it was more about not paying. And it was less, it was not pay directly related to pay, but just incentives additional? And the reason I just asked was because I'd heard about what Hudson had done, whether it's right or wrong, and just wanted to see if the committee had discussed that.
I'll fore your charge, you might see some of that. Question I had, in our charge, it said, hopefully you could consider intrinsic or non-monetary opportunities and benefits. Have you had that kind of discussions with the committee?
That was part of the survey that we did way back in the beginning, and that survey information has been kind of brought forward. I know that the union leadership has created a list based off of that survey, and so that'll again be work that we look on that kind of goes either hand-in-hand or side-by-side with this to say, here's the compensation components, but then here's some other things that we could do from a district standpoint that may not necessarily cost us anymore, but will definitely be an advantage to employees and could hopefully improve some morale.
Great, great, okay. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner John, I think you're next.
Okay. My question is, do we know how many of our staffs have a second job? I think that's going to determine how I vote as far as if we're going to pay them to go to school afterwards, to get more credits. Because person A may be able to do it and chooses not to because, you know, he just doesn't want to. A person B may need that second job in order, you know, to feed his family or her family. And so to eliminate paying somebody to go take those classes, I think is going to put up walls for those people, those individuals, individual Bs.
Thank you. Are you good? Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for all the work. I know there's been a lot of meetings related to this.
You're welcome.
So I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on that topic? Okay, all right. So five-year facility needs is up on our agenda.
Go ahead, turn on that. So you filling in for Larry?
I am. Good evening.
All right, great.
I'll first start by introducing myself. I'm Jeff Nester. I'm the building service manager for the northern part of the Eau Claire School District. So Larry was unable to be here tonight, so I volunteered to be his guy in charge, I guess.
Great, thank you.
So we'll get started. Our five-year capital projects for '16, '17, we've based that on the normal budget of $1.6 million, which I believe has been what we've been getting in recent years, is an average of $1.6 million. We have allocated our resources for repair and replacement based upon the need in the following areas. Facilities exterior, $688,000. This would include areas like Locust Lane and Mann's Window Replacement. Also, it'd be replacement of the shed roof down by North Track and the service center roof. Facility interior of $320,000. This would be numerous areas within Memorial and other locations that need their vinyl floors replaced. They've reached their life expectancy. Also, it also would include refinishing the gym floors over at North and Memorial. Plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. Basically, this $475,000 item is for the replacement of our chiller and our heating and cooling system, ventilation system that was installed in 1960 over at Mann's Elementary. District-wide of $115,000. That would include our A&E services and also a budget for our Health and Safety Division. That gives us a grand total, plus our contingency, gives a grand total of $1.6 million, which I believe is what the average is that we've been getting for the last few years. Just a simple note, we base industry standards should bring us in about $3.6 million to $4.7 million. That's based upon the square footage that we occupy and that we need to maintain. Maintenance needs, you know, this is, the discussion of a possible referendum has been circulating, so we thought it would be prudent if we brought back the maintenance needs that were presented to the Demographics and Trend Committee back in 2014. Budget restrictions have caused us to defer many of the items that are on this list, and also for the lack of the funding to be able to complete those. The Buildings and Grounds Department has identified the following areas that represent repair and replacement needs in the immediate future. Parking lots, $1.7 million. As you know, we have a lot of paved areas in the district, a lot of parking lots, a lot of playgrounds at $508,000. Several of these areas have deteriorated beyond the point of repair, meaning that we're unable to patch them or crack fill them effectively to deter their deterioration. We all know in the state of Wisconsin here, we have a very, very hefty freeze-thaw cycle. And when we're unable to patch those or crack fill those items, those areas, it's speeding up the deterioration process of our paved areas. Roofing, $8.9 million. These are 13 buildings, and just a quick note, that 70% of the roofs in our district are no longer covered under warranty. They've surpassed and exceeded their life cycle. Many of them can still be patched at this time. However, we are experiencing degradation in a lot of those roofs that in the near future, it will not be viable for us to be able to patch those or repair those. Windows and doors, windows of $1.2 million, and doors at $251,000. We have several, several numbers of windows in each that have reached their life cycle. We're spending a lot of time doing preventive maintenance on these items, trying to stop the infiltration of water and air. The infiltration of air in some of these items in these windows and in these doors has caused a lot of fluctuation in our classrooms, a lot of fluctuations in temperature in our classrooms, not to mention added heating costs and cooling costs, because we're unable to keep that, just like your house being sealed. You know, fluctuations in temperature in those rooms doesn't give us the best atmosphere for our children to be able to learn. And they all, they need to be replaced. Safety needs, which would still be under what I'd refer to as the maintenance items that we've deferred for a long time. Security upgrades at 15 of our buildings for $3.7 million. That would involve creating controllable and better visibility in our entrance systems, upgrading some of our camera systems and our security systems. And I think it's good to note that we do have effective methods and systems in place right now that provide pretty good security, but I think we are, we are kind of charged to do whatever we can, whatever's in our power, to make it the safest place for our children and our staff to be able to learn and work. ADA compliance upgrades. Just so you know, all of our buildings are at the minimum requirement for ADA. For $831,000, we're looking to expand our accessibility. For $831,000, we're looking to expand our accessibility. By expanding our accessibility with ADA, we'll be able to offer, offer better atmosphere for our, not only our students, our staff, and the public that uses our building. So it'll be a lot more accessible. HVAC and plumbing, $3.6 million. We have a lot of boilers, we have a lot of air conditioning units and chillers, as we refer to them, and air handlers in our buildings. A lot of those have reached their life cycle. I could tell you the one at North is 56 years old. I think the life cycle of that was right around 35 years. North, Memorial, Locust Lane, those boilers are all in need of replacement and repair. That falls on their safety, I mean, in my mind, is that eventually, if one of these boilers were to break during the school day or before school, we'd have a terrible situation at our hands, that we need to relocate different children to different buildings. That could, that can be an issue because if we have to replace a boiler, which is probably the most significant piece of equipment that we have, that could take a week to two weeks. So that's a week to two weeks that we're, we're unable to, to teach our children, right? And they're providing them with the best spot to learn. Just a little side note that we have reallocated some of these funds to do some upgrades over at South. They're well under their way with some of those, to upgrade their air handling system to make it modernize it and to bring it up into what I would call a more of a energy-friendly type of atmosphere. Fire alarms. First of all, our fire alarms work currently, but we have a lot of antiquated systems out there. I won't list the name, all the schools that have those, but they're antiquated systems, they're old systems. And we're increasingly, we're having to repair those systems and keep them operational and we're finding it hard to find repair parts for them or even people that service those type of, of items. So it behooves us to upgrade those as soon as we possibly can. We don't want what I'd refer to as an unforeseen expense. We can't go without a fire system, can't go without a fire alarm, right? Typical fire alarm and upgrade system is about $150,000. So if we have, if we had to do it in a hurry or if we had to do it on the fly, I think we're going to incur even more costs associated with that. So that gives us a grand total of $24.6 million with contingencies attached to it. Now, these are items that have been deferred due to, like I said before, budgetary concerns or restraints that we have had. We haven't been able to get to these items. These are all coming to the forefront, I believe, in the next three to five or five to seven years. There's items on here that are going to need to be replaced. And we're definitely going to need, need help to be able to do that or some guidance on the way we want to proceed. Some of the other maintenance needs that are not listed on there that you've probably heard about, buildings not included in that $24 million on the previous page are South, which I did state that we are presently replacing some air handling units over there and upgrading their air handling systems. To bring South up to what DeLong is right now, based upon estimates of remodel and addition, would be another additional $22 million. Roosevelt, there's another school that is in need of a remodel or even an addition that would bring us another $8 million to $10 million, based upon the construction costs that we had for the, doing DeLong. Couple other things to consider, Prairie Ridge, McKinley, and the possible use of Little Red. If we had to open all of those buildings to fulfill the demand, for, demand for our students, it's going to cost right around $3 million. Now that is an estimate and it varies depending on where you guys point us in the direction of what our needs are going to be or what you see our needs moving towards. That gives us a grand total for identified maintenance needs of up to 59 mil, 59.6 million. If anybody has any questions, I'm.
Commissioner, Commissioner, go ahead.
Just quick questions. It's possible that South and Roosevelt might have things that are duplicate, correct?
South.
If you were to fix the safety and, yeah, the, the safety column, if you were to fix the safety column, you can wait until remodel, which includes the safety.
Correct, correct. You would find, if we were remodeling at South, which we may be doing, and at Roosevelt, and Prairie Ridge, and McKinley also, there would definitely be a cost benefit that we can incorporate some of those safety items during that, you know, redoing some of the vestibules and, and replacing windows. So we, we get a little break, to make it simple, if we do those during those times.
Commissioner Dux.
Can you tell me if the locker rooms at North were replaced? Because we talked about that several years ago and.
That is, that would be on, they were not, I, I shouldn't say that. The team locker rooms were not replaced. The Fayette locker rooms were, were upgraded, but they are on this maintenance budget.
Oh, I didn't see it. Thank you.
You bet.
I have another question. Didn't Sam Davey have their windows replaced a few years ago?
Sam Davey did not. Longfellow had all of their windows.
They look like they've been replaced to me. I mean, they look kind of new. They're not, I just thought they didn't look old. I thought they'd been replaced.
They hadn't been replaced. We thank you for making, making it sound like we did a great job of maintaining those. But they are energy inefficient. There's portions that, are they in bad shape? Overall, they're energy inefficient and they need to be replaced. Can we keep going at the same rate that we're going at? I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, the, all, everything catches up to you in the end. So we have to come up with a plan and move forward in updating those. You noticed that Sam Davey Locust Lane would be another one, there's like a brown panel underneath the windows. That panel is starting to delaminate, meaning it's metal and it starts to pull away. As it pulling away from the wall, water is starting to get in behind there. We all know in Wisconsin, when you get water behind something, it freezes and it thaws and it freezes and it thaws and it causes even more damage. So we spend a lot of time doing preventive maintenance on that to, to avoid any excess costs.
Commissioner Ann Boil.
I just have to say this, when you talked about the North boiler is 56 years old, we figured that it was put in when Eisenhower was president. I just want you all to take that, that was thanks to Mary Ann. She leaned over and said to me, do you know Eisen, and it's true. And that, I mean, that's sad too, when you think about what we've tried to do to patch and keep things nice, which we have, but I really took to heart the fact that it would take one to two weeks and if we were not proactive about it, we could be backpedaling as well, so.
Correct. We don't want to have to displace anybody, any students, and, and being proactive is, is the best step, if we can. You know, we'll do our level best to make sure that we maintain what we have. And sometimes you got to patch it up to keep it moving along. And I can say the 56-year-old boilers, and if you'd like to look at them, feel free to give me a call to come to North and I can show them to you, they are, they're monsters.
There was just an article in the paper about the B-52s continuing to be maintained too.
Correct.
Did you have another comment? Commissioner, okay, go ahead.
I do.
Commissioner John.
I applaud everybody for keeping the buildings going. I know some of them or some of the things that we have in those buildings are older than at least two of the board members here. So I, I applaud you for that. But can you give me, sorry, okay, three, four, seven, there. Can you tell me what is involved in a security update? What's all required in order for us to meet at least the standards?
You mean, the best practices out there for security? Without getting into too much detail, I would say is increased visibility and increased control, creating what I'd refer to as an entryway where people can enter in there and we have a clear line of sight, or someone has a clear line of sight of them to take a look at them before they're able to enter the building. And they're not able to enter the building because our doors are, are locked and secured, which they are now, but we'll have a better, a better view of them. So we can take that, you can see all around them. There's, you can get a good view out of a camera, right? But you can't look at the expression in someone's eyes unless you can see them through a pane of glass. It's just another step and another level that allows us to protect those, that we're, we have to take care of. Does that make sense?
Yes, I guess I was more looking for, was it windows? Was it doors? Because I think Commissioner Vu was getting to the point where if we are going to replace that door this year and next year, we're going to do security update, then, you know, I'm sure you already account for all of that.
Yep, we take that into account. Now, some of these locations are going to need what I'd refer to as an extensive redesign in order to, to bring them up to what I would call the, the, the normal standards.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luganville.
So with the redesign kind of being brought up, has there been talk with the principals at Memorial High School about the potential of kind of restructuring, how those secure entrances are and further utilizing the back entrance?
Actually, if we go back on to what I would call our maintenance budget, the one that, items that we need for improvement, that is included in there. I know that there was extensive talk about reconfiguring that or changing the entrance to Memorial.
To the other side.
To face the, the parking lot. Just like the majority of like North High School, I guess it, it faces the parking lot. You said that and when I knew I was coming over here, I drove over there on Friday and took a look at that. So and I, I talked to Darrell Peterson, who would be the building supervisor over there and he, he let me, let me know what the discussions were on that. And some of them, and that is an extensive remodel that would have to happen. But along with that, there are some updates in that area of the building that need to be done. So if we're going to go to that extent, we definitely can see some cost savings by completing some updates in that area also.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, any public comments on this topic? Another exciting one, okay. Too depressing to come up and talk about. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so next on our agenda is referendum discussion. If I understand, Abby, you're just going to, you know, present some of the numbers that we saw in the budget.
On Monday night?
Right.
Yes. Yep. I have some clarifications in the presentation based upon some questions from the Budget Development Committee meeting that we held last week, but we wanted to share with the full board what we had shared with the Budget Development Committee meeting last Monday. Several of our discussions were about class size and looking at the reconfiguration of Sage. I'm sure as most people know here that the Sage program looks a little bit different this year. You have the option to stay with the Sage funding to make smaller classrooms and going forward, that's going to look different and there's three options to do that. And the school district will decide and submit a plan to the state and the state will have to approve that plan. So the three choices are having an instructional coach in the classroom, maintain the smaller class size, which is what we're currently doing with Sage, or go to a one-on-one tutoring If we go ahead and reconfigure the State Sage program following the new AGR model, there's a potential to save eight FTE over the course of the year. If we would eliminate the Sage program completely from the district, it would save us about 11 FTE, which is about $847,000. If we move fully to the district targeted class sizes, at elementary school, the grades K3 is 25 students and grades four and five is 29 students. That would affect four elementary schools currently and we would need six additional FTE with a projected cost of $462,000.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't 25 and 29 the max in the range? So that the target was actually 21 and 25? And so at this point, the range was supposed to max out and so that there's, so what you're saying is when we hit that max point, we would automatically then add FTEs, which I think was supposed to how, be how it worked in the first place?
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
It was, except that we haven't been able to do it with, I mean, such immediacy. I, I put it out there then, what drives us policy and what we believe is good policy and, and, or is it money? I mean, it, it's starting to be that conversation, so, exactly.
And this is, again, you're right Wendy Sue, that there is a targeted class size range. We were just looking at if we went to the max of that targeted class size, what would it look differently for our district? If we increase the average class size in grades K3 from 25 to 30, and that's a max, we could have a cost savings as a district of $2.5 million, which is approximately 33 FTE. If we would increase the class size in grades four, five, from a maximum of 25, 29 to 35, that would give us a cost savings of about $462,000 or six FTE.
Commissioner Johnson.
If anybody watching this at home thinks that we should save $500,000 by doing this, you must be in a room for an entire day with 35, or 29 for that matter, sweaty little fourth and fifth graders. Can you imagine? Or 30 first graders? And most people can't, are, if they don't have children in Sage, are, are exhausted after a couple of hours of like one or two of them. And like, this is just not, should not even be on the table.
I think, I think, I, I don't think, you shouldn't interpret this as a proposal, but you should think about the possibilities if we don't pass a referendum.
That is the key right there.
That, that is the point, really. I mean, obviously we don't want this, but if we don't pass referendum, we are going to have to do something. And we can't go into reserve forever, which means that class sizes, other things. So that, I, I, I get it. You're right, Commissioner Johnson, but these are the possibilities.
They're going to call the board and ask us to go help.
Well, and the other thing that you need.
Well, I try to.
The other thing that we need to keep in mind is that some of our classrooms cannot hold 30 students in kindergarten through third grade and fourth and fifth grade. You cannot fit 35 of those age kids at our building. So it's not only a class size problem, it's also a facilities problem because our classrooms are not designed to hold that. But again, thank you Rich for clarifying, this is information that we need to, we need to be understanding of. If we can't pass a referendum when that decision is made, this could be an example of something that could be realistically happening in our district. Not that that's what we want, but this is just some realities of what could happen. If we go the other way with class sizes in the, I missed the elementary school, hold on a second. I deleted a slide. All right, I had a, I had a, some numbers, if we decreased the average class size in the, in the elementary levels. And off the top of my head, I don't know what the cost additional would be, so I'll make sure when this gets uploaded to Board Docs that that slide is in there because you, you have to look at both extremes and what, what does that look like and how does that affect a referendum question or referendum discussion in our district. So I apologize about that and I don't have a paper copy, so I'll make sure that is in there. If we move to the secondary schools, if we decrease the average class size from 24, the range of 24 to 27 and 22 to 25, just in the core and required areas and grade six, we would need about an additional $1.4 million or 18.3 FTE. Now again, this is if we decrease that average class size, this is secondary level. If we go the other way and we increase the average class size from 24 to 27 to 27 to 30 in all content areas, that would save us about a million dollars or about 14 FTE. Another thing that we had discussed was what if we look at the number of classes that are taught? At the secondary level, you could increase the number of classes taught from five classes to. to six classes per day. You could do that in the core and required areas, that would save about $1.9 million. That's about 25 FTE. This is strictly just the cost savings on the FTE. It doesn't take into any consideration, you might need to pay your teachers more because they're now teaching six classes instead of five classes. We were strictly looking at FTE for this. If we went to all content areas, it could save the district about $3.6 million or 47 If we go to facilities, I'm not going to get into a lot of discussion about this because Jeff just presented for us. But again, these are the high needs and kind of just remembering that we need to get, be looking at those because as we're making changes and we're trying to decide, what do we need to do? Facilities is an important part of that discussion. If we look at programming costs and just different areas that, you know, we're constantly hearing from our community, athletics, our athletics currently cost the district $1.6 million. That is net of fees that we collect. I know that there's a push to get rid of our athletic fees, and in the 14, 15 year, we collected about $323,000 worth of athletic fees just for participation fees. If we include the co-curricular admissions, which when you pay to go to a football game or pay to go to a volleyball game, that's an additional about 126,000. If you add those two together and take that away, our athletics would cost us about $2.1 million. So about 500,000 is the net of the collections that we're making. If we look at our partnership coordinators, they cost us about $450,000 a year. Our lit, and instructional coaches are about 1.5 million. Our community custodial costs, those are the building, the building rentals that came back into Fund 10, that's about $600,000. If we look at music, art, and fayed at the elementary school, that program costs us about $2.7 million.
Hold on, Abby. Commissioner Johnson, go ahead.
Is the community custodial cost after you subtracted the revenue we generate with the rentals? Because I thought it was supposed to be relatively cost neutral.
It's supposed to be, but because all of, unless it's directly tied to that community group going there, it cannot be in Fund 80 any longer. The law changed in 14, 15.
Right, but we're, we're taking in money. The community groups are all paying an application fee, and if it's out of normal custodial hours, they're paying custodial fees. So what is the revenue we're bringing in by renting our facilities?
I don't have that number with me right now, but the $600,000 represents, we used to allocate 5% of every custodian salary to Fund 80 because they're there prepping for those groups. In addition to overtime that's billed directly to those organizations, we could no longer charge that 5% of their salary to Fund 80. So that 600,000 is coming back in to be a Fund 10, general fund cost that we now need to cover. Any additional costs for custodial that are related to a building rental that is billed to the organization and that is offset within Fund 80. Our AP programs at the high schools, is that costs us about 1.2 million. Project Lead the Way is about 500,000, and Field Trips on average is about $35,000 that the district is currently spending.
I would like to make one comment. Some of these, I, I don't want you to think of that, like, if we say, cut them, that we save a lot of money. Because, you know, like, if, if, say we didn't want to do AP anymore, which we won't do, but suppose we cut that, I mean, those kids are still going to go to other classes, and so you're going to have to pay teachers for the other classes they're in. So, you know, I don't want you to think about that, that saves us money by cutting one of, some of those necessarily, so.
Again, most of this is just informational, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the costs that we're currently putting into our educational process. Technology, it's very real to all of us because we want our kiddos to be very well-versed and be ready for 20, in the 21st century. And so, on this slide, we have really kind of the ideal of what do we really, really want, and we have the bare bones. So for, for fiscal year 16, 17, in one aspect, we'd love to spend $5.4 million on technology, and that would include an expansion of iPads and Chromebooks at those levels that currently don't have those. If we don't do any expansion and updating any of that technology equipment, the cost would be about $842,000. If we look out to fiscal year 17, 18, again, we could spend another potential $5 million to expand those devices. And also, if we look at 17, 18, the, the refresh part is $3.4 million. Currently, our iPads are almost at the end of their life cycle, and they are going to need to be refreshed because some of the new updates we can't download. And again, to be competitive and to make sure that our students are ready to go out into the world and work with technology, everything needs to be up to date. And so, again, some very significant costs to help keep our students very competitively educated in that area. If we look at fiscal year 18, 19, again, a potential expansion would be about $3.5 million. If we just are looking to maintain infrastructure, it's about $570,000. The tech, the technology plan will be reviewed and updated according to the recommendations of the strategic plan. And again, we just wanted to get this information out to you guys as well to know, you know, the various aspects that technology can have on our budget. Compensation. Kay spent a lot of time tonight talking about the compensation plan, and you will notice that we didn't talk about any numbers. That is because we are still working through the numbers for the new proposed plans, but we did want to give you an idea, if we kept things exactly the way they are on the current salary schedule, what the numbers would look like for the individual groups. This does not include any CPI increase. This is basically just taking our current salary schedule and moving groups forward one step. So for the certified staff, to move them forward one step, it would cost an additional $830,000. If we look at the classified group, that cost to the district to move them forward one step on the existing schedule is $11,000. If we look at the cooks, that cost is about $850. And the reason that one is so different is because the majority of our cooks are already on the top level of their salary schedule, so there's not any place for them to go. If we look at custodians, it's approximately $17,000 to move them forward on their existing schedule just one step. Non-affiliated, to do the same thing, would cost us about $78,000 in the salaries area. Again, those are some really big numbers, and just, I want to preface that this is based upon our current salary schedule the way that it is. And hopefully, very soon, we will have some more updated numbers for you based upon a new compensation structure for all of these groups. But did want to give some information if everything looked the same as it does today.
Yeah, I just clarified, so I had asked, in the budget committee, I'd asked Abby and others to do that, just so we had an idea of what this would cost or what we might consider putting in a referendum. And I think we should point out that this does not include benefits that may change based on moving up step.
Correct. This is just strictly salary.
Yeah.
So we could do a quick calculation because there's so many things and benefit numbers are contingent upon salaries, so this is just strictly the salary increase part of it.
Commissioner Hammock Boyle.
I had a question. You know, I, I look at the employment report and I see our special education assistants flying out the door. And, and it's a hard place for us to keep people, and we, that makes it hard on the kids and whatever. And we're thinking about getting 75% of, of median in that area for the hourly staff. I'm on that, on that committee. What would it cost to get people just to the median?
I haven't done those projections yet.
I mean, I, I, as a board, I'd like to know what, what that would be, because I, I mean, I, I just think we have to talk about that.
Yeah, I will.
Just to clarify, wasn't that for starting wage, though?
That is for starting wage. And I can tell you, for the special ed aides to get them to 75% at that starting level, it's like a dollar and 75 cent an hour increase at that bottom level. And so, we did have that discussion as part of the compensation committee group, and, and Kay and I talked with Bob Butler about that. And it's a move in the right direction? Is that exactly where we need to be? You know, we're not sure yet, but it's definitely a big bump to those areas that are really hard to fill and that are significantly under that market value right now. I think when you look at their market value, the bulk of the SEAs, I think, were about 67%. And so, that's why that would make such a big difference for them versus somebody who's at 73%. There's not a big gap.
That's why I brought it up, I, yeah.
Yep. So, but I can add that to my list to do is get the projections to the median. Innovation is something else that we've been asked about, and right now, it's really hard for us to put a cost to that because we're not really sure what that looks like. So some of the things that we've been talking about are curriculums and pathways. In our community, we're hearing from the, the community that it would be nice to have a healthcare kind of pathway because we have a lot of healthcare in this, in this community business. We have a lot of business industries, and again, they would like to see some business pathways for our students. IT, if you think about JAMP, which is just, you know, a few, few blocks over from here, you know, they would like to see some really highly educated students coming out in the IT world. And also manufacturing, we have a lot of those industries right here in Eau Claire. And so, what does that look like and how does that affect our educational system for Eau Claire? And the other thing that you guys have heard about as well is the Charter Choice Committee, and it's too very, very early for us to be able to project some costs, but it is also something that we've been talking about. That's the end of the presentation that we gave the Budget Development Committee meeting last week. And so, if you have additional questions, I can take them now, or if there's additional things that you would like us to cast out, I can make some notes and bring that back.
Commissioner Loganville.
Yeah, I just have some ideas I want to get out there. You know, Commissioner Hammock Boyle talking about kind of the median and maybe going beyond, it takes me back to the idea of thrive versus survive. And when I look at what we saw earlier from Kay, you know, there is, they're looking at massive inequities, looking at those structural inequities, targeting those internal inequities as part of our strategic priorities. And when we have, you know, I, I just feel that things are very fragmented, and we won't be able to solve everything with a referendum, but we need to target some of those areas, I think, and, and look a little bit bigger. When we have people making salaries close to or higher than the governor, but there are summer school teachers making minimum wage, teaching staff who haven't seen much of a raise in five, six years, an elementary school secretary who's been working in the district 30 years and making 12 bucks an hour, and keeping everything in mind, when we're looking at talking about 750 as a starting rate, Woodman's cashier's, it's 12 bucks an hour. That's the starting pay, 12 bucks an hour at Woodman's. School secretary, 30 years in this district at an elementary school, she's the face of that school, and she's making 12 bucks an hour. So I, and I don't say these things to divide any of those individual groups, but I bring them up because as a district, and I think that the community sees this, that as a district, we should not be a place where the only people who get ahead are the ones who advocate for themselves the loudest, or the, or are the ones who are closest or get along the best with the administrators or leaders. Because to me, as a board, we should be advocating for every person in every role, in every school, in every job, at every pay grade. And as we move forward, I think, I think we need to think really long and hard about that issue. And what kind of an example that will set, what kind of a lesson that we'll teach our children, and also, what kind of values that will connect the community with.
Joe, I just want to follow up and let you know that, that example, the $20 of the high and the 750, we don't, the only people that are making like minimum wage right now is our student workers. We don't have anybody there. That was just an example to kind of show you how the calculation would work. I'm not sure what the, I think the bottom of the classified scale right now is around 12 dollars, depending on what your job responsibilities are, but that's, again, on the current schedule that was in place last year. But the 750 was just for example purposes, and I don't want anybody to think that that's, that that's where we're at with our starting wages.
No, I get that. I just, I mean, I do know there are summer school teachers making minimum wage, who are with the middle school kids, you know? Teacher at the long, making minimum wage.
Teachers? Usually, summer school teachers get 2670 an hour.
So you look at summer band, it's an area to just take a peek, because that's minimum wage.
I think summer band teachers are paid per diem, if I'm not mistaken. We can check it out.
Okay.
Commissioner Vu, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a questions for Abby. During the community forum presentation, you, you show us a pie.
Yep.
And the pie is 100%.
Correct.
You can squeeze one section of the pie to be smaller and the other section to be bigger, but they all come out 100% at the end.
That's correct.
I see that there's a pattern, and the pattern is that we will have to make decisions to squeeze the section of the pie, one section over the other. There's no way to go around it. But we are in a position to, to squeeze that pie or increase the pie, section of the pie because we are now having a strategic plan in front of us. It spelled out the priority, and they are, one, two, three, four, five, five priority. We also have in detail, not detail yet, but at least bullet, item under each of those priority. Is it possible for, for us to ask, how would you translate the bullets in terms of monies?
Okay.
For the next five years? Because that's how long this plan will last. That way, it will help us advocate for the referendum and the amount that we need.
Okay. Yeah.
Is it possible?
I think so. I need to look at those five bullets and see, and we can talk in this, as an exec team, and try to see what would that look like and what do we think would kind of fall into that pot? And you're exactly right. I mean, that pie is 100%, and I think one of my examples was if our property taxes are 75% of that pie, then that means our state aid is 25%. And then, if you go the other way, if our state aid is 75%, then our property taxes are 25%. And the only way for us to get more money to get outside of that is to have that referendum, to ask our community to support us and give us more money to keep operating and, you know, either one, maintain what we're currently doing or thrive and bring these things so that way, we are still a very competitive educational community or educational system within our community.
The referendum actually increases the pie.
It, it does, yep. It does make it a bigger pie.
It raises the revenue limits.
Yep.
Yeah. Other comments? Commissioner Zhang.
Okay, a lot of my questions were already asked and answered. The two that I asked in Budget Committee, which was about poverty, I would still like that one answered. But the other, which is, are we violating any of our policies, whether that is federal, state, or local? If we should choose to start squeezing, pretty much cut, all right? Let's hold that off until that time comes.
Can you remind me what your question was on poverty?
Poverty, pretty much how much is it costing the district? And if, if we need to, to do any more in order to, you know, make that a efficient process?
Was that specific to the homeless part?
Uh, prevention, yes.
Prevention, okay.
Commissioner Loganville.
I have, I just kind of am curious about, not looking at the specifics of what the, the figures are, what kind of, you know, at the last meeting, I know Commissioner Hammock Boyle, you talked about, asked about connecting the community regarding the referendum. And we sit here December 7th, and there is no real plan on how to involve the staff, on how to involve the parents, how to reach the community. I've seen ideas, I've seen some lists sent to us, but I haven't seen a plan. I have seen nothing like that developed, nothing on marketing, nothing on PR, nothing on cultivating connections, nothing on social media, nothing on engaging staff. There are staff and principals who are actually getting in touch with board members, asking how to get involved. I've had some people talk to me about that, who've called me. I don't understand why we're at that point, so I just want to put it out there for me personally, in my thinking that I would not be comfortable voting yes on any referendum question to be placed on a ballot unless if a plan is signed, sealed, and delivered to this board ahead of time on how we're going to reach this community.
Okay, so we should, you had a plan. Commissioner Johnson.
I would just say, Joe, I, I agree with you, except that I, it seems as if, like, we're in this kind of holding pattern, almost like the chicken and the egg. I think it's pretty clear that this board is going to, is ready to go to a referendum. So I, you know, and maybe we, I, I know we're not voting on that now, but if there's any reservations about, we're going to go to an operating referendum in April of 2016, we should probably be clear about that because that's, that's the direction we're heading. And so, if we're confident we're going to do it, then it's just a matter of take... then it's just a matter of taking the lists of all the places that we know we need to go, staff meetings, BTO meetings, and all the community groups, and start plugging in some dates. Because they, the staff probably already have their staff meeting set for January, February, and March. And so we can just get them on a calendar. And so when, you know, the holidays are passed, we are ready to hit the ground running. And we've got, you know, it's just a matter of putting people's names into the dates. We probably know when the elementary parent teacher conferences are. And so we know we need to have twenty different sites, you know, twenty people covering, you know, all the elementary sites on that date. So we can put them on our calendars. So I would, I agree with you. I think we need to stop pretending that we're, we're not sure if we're going and actually get the dates and everybody who needs to hear from us, whether it's administrators or board members or community members, or likely all three if possible at most of those places. We should just start getting it scheduled so that we can jump right in to do that.
Yes to both. Others?
The way we're talking in the budget and moving forward was that we, the next budget committee, that we would hopefully get some options from administration, referendum options to discuss. And then December twenty first, the board meeting, we would present some of those are modified to the board to discuss so that hopefully on January fourth, we can make a decision. The hitch is that compensation piece coming in really, getting good numbers for that. And we'll, we'll see how that goes. But that's kind of hitch. So that's the plan. The budget will, budget committee will start discussing those and then bring them to the board December twenty first. Unless I, unless I'm misunderstanding how we discussed it. Okay?
No, that's how I understood it.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you, Abby. Any comments from the public on this topic? Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, come on up. Sure. Yeah. Just press the button, just give your name.
My name is David Kemp. I live at twenty thirty Mitchell Avenue, across the street from South. I, I wanted to attend this meeting because I wanted to kind of see what the inner action was. And I've come up with a couple of conclusions about the makeup of the school board. It seems to me the picture is that we have to choose in a lot of sense between people or cement. And looking around, I don't think there's any question what we think is more important. Since it's been talked about referendums possibly coming out next spring, for about the last months, I have asked people, people I know, friends, people at events, what their thoughts are about the proposed numbers that have been thrown out there. And I think number one is that there hasn't been a very good job of getting information out to the public. And in talking to the people that I've talked with at this point, I can tell you, I don't think the referendum's going to pass. That's just what I've gotten from talking to people about it. And I know there's some tough decisions out there and I wish everybody the best of luck. But I'm just wanting to tell you the feedback I've gotten from people out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think that was part of Joe's point about having a plan to reach out. Thank you very much. Okay, so this last agenda item, because it's late, I, I am, I must admit, I'm the one that asked to see if this could be put on to see if we can get another policy out of the way because I know there were a lot and I knew you guys were far along. I did say if, if it was late and if board members are tired and want to postpone it, they can. So I will leave it up to board members on that. So I, I take responsibility for putting it on the agenda for there. So, so the, 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 uh, agenda item was Policy Three Thirty-two on Innovation Zones. So thoughts on board members, if you want to look, look at it tonight or where you're at? Commissioner Luganville.
I can just tell you that we have the theme of the rabbit hole in P and G. And the rabbit hole that we, there were a couple that we went down and saw Peter Rabbit. And the one, the ones that we really had a lot of discussion on, that took up a lot of time in committee, was about the broader role of committees and the different types of committees of the board and the structure of those committees, who would chair them, who would be the liaison to them. So, you know, with this policy, if it were to be moved forward or really in any situation, we would also have to look at those aligning policies, specifically Policy One Eighty-five and Policy One Eighty-six. So I just wanted to put that out there that we're doing our due diligence on the, kind of the alignment, which is a word we've been, I've used it more than I've ever used in my life in the last seven months, alignment. But that's, that'll be a huge part.
Commissioner Duex.
Well, I was going to ask if we could discuss board committees that, on the next agenda. Because we ran into a little problem today with this particular policy. We're, we're prepared to talk about it if everybody wants to do that.
I agree. And I thought we could decide maybe having a work session on board committees or something of that nature. So, yeah, I, I've been thinking about that too. Commissioner Hammock Boyle.
I think, and we also talked a little bit about the board committee structure and our governance structure and what that would look like as we align that as well.
Okay, so now we've talked about that some. Policy Three Thirty-two, Innovation Zones. How, where are we at on that? Do people feel comfortable with it? Do we have comments that would require significant changes? Maybe get some feedback here.
Table it.
Table it. That's yours? Well, we'd postpone it, actually.
Instead of having a first reading?
I think, Commissioner Johnson, I think suggesting postponing it because it's, is late, correct?
Well, we can't have a first reading if we haven't had any discussion and we have to do that first.
Yes, so, but just postpone the topic till the next board meeting is, is Commissioner Johnson suggests.
I'm for that.
Commissioner Vu.
I have another meeting tomorrow morning at seven thirty.
Okay. Commissioner Vu.
I second that motion because this topic deserve a fair and full energy. Fair time amount and full energy.
Okay, so we have a motion, I'll take it as a motion, Commissioner Johnson to postpone it and a second from Vu. Other discussion on that?
This is brand new, correct?
Yeah, we had presentations on it from the committee before, but it's the first time I've actually seen the policy, correct?
Yeah, so then I would echo, hopeful.
And I think that's reasonable. I just put it on hoping that we might have some time to get another policy out of the way, but it was unrealistic. Okay, all right. Go ahead, Commissioner Hammock Boyle.
I'm just going to be the dissension here because I, we've got so much work to do. I have a hard time, I understand, but I have a hard time postponing it just for that reason.
I can go get some five hour energies from the QuickTrip and bring them all by for everyone.
Well.
It's not healthy role modeling.
Not healthy role modeling. So I, I'm glad you're working on a policy. I like it. But I think, I think we're right, we need a good discussion on it. So given that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of postponing it? Say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Two noes. Commissioner Luganville, Commissioner Hammock Boyle. Thank you. Sleep patterns, okay. So we don't need any public comments on that topic. Are there requests for future agenda items? I had actually had on mind to look at the structure of our committees as one. Are there others? Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I have a request that I will forward to whoever I need to, to consider a resolution supporting the efforts of a Rave Register and Vote Eau Claire. It's a nonpartisan citizen group dedicated to increasing voter registration and providing information to get people to the polls. And it truly is nonpartisan. So I'll share their sample resolution and for you to consider an agenda setting.
Great. Okay. It's on voting? Any other agenda items? Okay, all those in favor, I'm sorry, we need a motion to adjourn. Excuse me. So we have a motion from Commissioner Vu, a second?
Second.
The sec- oh, who is, who motioned? Oh, Commissioner Luganville motioned, second from Commissioner Vu. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.
This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling seven one five eight three nine five oh six seven or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.